And I'd like to call to order the meeting with a roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Michael?
Here.
Supervisor Flynn?
Here.
And Supervisor Long?
Here. Thank you. And if we would take a moment now and rise for a moment of affirmation and then we'll have our pledge. As this is the first meeting of the board in this holiday season, take an opportunity to think about those we care most about, those we can care about through this entire month and reach out to for the holiday season, those who are in need and those who are closest to our hearts. Thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Parks, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's been a motion and a second to accept the minutes of Tuesday, November 22nd, hearing no objection. So ordered. At this time, we'll have agenda review. Good morning, Mr. Johnston.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we have several modifications to the agenda. Consent item number 12 has a revised resolution. Consent item number 13, the agenda title only, it requires a four-fifths vote, which was not listed that way. I'd like to request that item 26 be pulled off the consent agenda and the auditor wants to make some modification, which we can do later. Item 28, should CEO recommends approval as proposed and read ordinance in title only, continued final adoption from December 13th, 2005 at 9:30 a.m. And items 30 and 38 both have revised board letters.
Item 26 again is to pull it off for discussion and action or pull it off for work?
Just for reading in a change.
Okay.
For a change.
Okay.
What was the last, items 30 and?
38.
30 and 38 have revised letters.
Okay. All right, action on the agenda changes?
One other change, go ahead.
I had actually two. I'd like to pull 17 for questions and also on item 23, which is a watershed protection district report back on anti-coagulants. I would ask that we continue that to maybe the second meeting in January as a time certain.
That number 23?
Item 23.
Yeah, I would second that. I'd like to have time to, over the break, to go out and do some investigation in terms of watershed and stuff.
And I have some reports to get from them, too.
Okay, so that's the poll for the second meeting in January and to have it as a time certain?
Yes, please.
And 17, just for discussion today?
Yes, just some questions.
Okay. Are there any others on the agenda review? Okay, action on the agenda review?
Move approval as amended.
Motion and a second, hearing no objection. Okay, so ordered. Then on the consent agenda items 10 through 26, we're going to pull 26 for discussion and 17 for discussion. Any other requested changes on the consent?
Move the consent calendar as modified.
Motion and a second as modified, any objection? Hearing none? All right, so ordered. Let's go to then item 17, Supervisor Parks.
Yeah, this is just a receive and file report about our converting over to the Cal-Win system for our Human Services Agency. And looking through the report, it discusses, for example, on page, I guess it would be five of the Human Services Update Report, it talks about full staffing is highly recommended prior to the implementation. And then on page seven talks about aggressive recruitment is going to be necessary to fill all the agency vacancies. And on page eight, it talks about staff will experience backlogs at go-live due to the difficulties of conversion. These backlogs are expected to last up to 12 months. I'm wondering about what is the status, how many positions need to be filled, and what will the impact be on clients as a result of up to a year backlog on some of this? So maybe I can get more information at our next meeting on that. I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention unless staff is available to answer now.
Good morning. My name is Terri Saff.
Would you speak into the mic, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Terri Saff. I'm with Human Services Agency and I'm the Cal-Win Program Implementation Manager.
I'm Patty Sanchez and I'm the Cal-Win Project Manager. Regarding the staffing.
May I ask you to speak more into the mic?
Get closer to the mic. Sorry. I'm Patty Sanchez and I'm the Cal-Win Project Manager.
And if you would move over a little bit, right in front of the mic, I'm going to talk about.
Whoever is speaking, you need to speak into the mic.
Okay. What we can do, we did not bring with us facts and figures on staffing. We can certainly provide that to the board.
And what about the issue of the 12-month backlog? How will that affect clients? Or is that something you'd like to come back with? I'm most willing to wait.
We can do that. Excuse me. The backlog of 12 months is due to the discrepant case issue when we convert to Cal-Win. We are estimating it's going to take a full 12 months to work through all of the discrepancies with the current workload. So it will impact clients. We may see an additional time that the client has spent at the office. The workers will have to work through those discrepancies in the cases before Cal-Win can correctly run the eligibility and determination of benefit calculation. When we go live, if a case is discrepant, from the legacy system, which is our WICAR system, Cal-Win will And then Cal-Win will calculate that benefit and determine eligibility. The client will continue to receive their benefits, but it will take approximately 12 months to clean up all the discrepant cases.
Okay, so that was the important part. I wanted to make sure people who are eligible weren't denied their benefits because of this, but it's just a matter of they may have to stay longer to help in the office or whatever to help you get all the records straight. Okay, that's good. And if you can come back for me regarding, it really stresses how important it is that you have full staffing positions to get this up, or we could have even, you know, probably longer backlogs and other problems. So if you can let me know what we're looking at in terms of the positions that need to be filled that aren't filled, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, we have to be aware that these statewide systems do not have a very good history and lots of money has been wasted on them because they simply didn't work. So we have to be on top of this thing as Ventura County representatives.
Absolutely. We're very focused on that.
There are other questions? Thank you for answering the questions. Appreciate it. Supervisor Parks? Wish to receive and file the action, then?
Yes, please receive and file. Thank you.
Motion, second, receive and file. I appreciate the information, hearing no objections. So ordered. All right, then on to item 26. Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Long. Item 26 requires a correction in recommendation number one where it says increase charges for services that should read increase intergovernmental revenue.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Motion, second, to amend the language, so includes increasing intergovernmental
revenue. Hearing no objection? So ordered. Thank you. All right. And that completes the agenda review items and the consent agenda. At this time, we will move to public comments. Those folks wishing to speak to the board under public comment, I'd ask you to please submit a blue card to do so and I will call those folks up as cards have been submitted. And I'd like to invite up first Sharon Madonna.
Good morning. My name is Sharon Madonna and it's a pleasure to be here before you're speaking this morning. I'm just honored to live in a country where we can bring problems to supervisors and things might actually be done about them. I work for Ventura County as a nurse. I'm a public health nurse now and I just came to remind you guys of what an integral part we are of your community. We receive grant monies and fundings from Medi-Cal, from maternal-child health to go out into your community, educate moms, babies, dads, families, neighborhoods on how to stop doing detrimental things that may stop them from coming into the healthcare agency with problems that are compounded by lack of knowledge and lack of caring. We are a unique entity in the county. There are no other nurses in the county that can do these jobs. You must be a public health nurse to sit on a school absentee resource board. You must be a public health nurse to assist in a SIDS, the sudden death syndrome, baby death. You need to be a public health nurse for that. We have new monies coming in from grants all the time. The CAPIT program, Every Family Counts, we work with the domestic violence people, we work with the judges, we work with a lot of people in the community trying to make this a better place. And I know you care about your community and I know you care about Ventura County. And I'm just here this morning asking you that when you go into contract negotiations, hello, it's that time again, and yes, we've come to see you, that you don't forget about the public health nurses. We know that the hospital is in crisis. There's a lot of need in the hospital, but we ask also for you to recognize us, for our education, to be a public health nurse, you have to have a bachelor's degree. We don't get any significant compensation for that, whereas in the hospital, they get three and a half percent. We don't even get the $1.88 assignment bonus that they get, but we go out into neighborhoods that some cops will shudder when they know that we're going there alone, without security, without other staff members. We go with our little nurses' bag, in our little county car, and we drive up to the doors and we knock. We look around, we see what's going on. Is my car parked for a fast getaway? Is my pager on there? Can I fake that somebody's paging me? If things escalate inside the house, can I bail? We go where the eyes and the ears of the community. We go into homes where babies have been removed and then replaced. We make sure that they're being fed, that they're being cared. We teach moms how to love and interact with their kids. We have play therapy. We have, it's amazing what colleges and universities have done. We don't reinvent the wheel. We simply take these tools into the communicate, community, excuse me, and try to educate these people that simply loving your child, interacting, eye contact, is going to make, excuse me, a big impact in the future. First five with their thrust for preventative education with getting kids into preschools, just simple things like that. But I just want to remind you that you need a public health nurse to do that. RNs from the hospital can't do that. They need a certificate that says you're a public health nurse. So I've just come to ask you to please acknowledge us when negotiations come. At the last negotiations, we kind of stood back and we said, yeah, let the hospital nurses get the big increase. But we can't recruit. Nobody wants to come and work for us from the hospital because they get the assignment bonuses, the weekend differentials, the salary increases, that somehow public health nursing has been glossed over and sort of like pushed on the back burner. But we feel that we are out there in the community serving you. We went to a seminar yesterday, we were all fitted with N95 masks to assist as second responders in the case of bioterrorist acts in this community, God forbid, but we were fitted with the gear, the garb, the goggles, and the special breathing apparatus in case there's an outbreak. Simply we may just have to give immunizations all day to everybody in the community, or simply we may be passing out just bags of antibiotics, or we might be toe-tagging bodies out there for you. We don't know what we're going to be doing, but we just come and ask you this morning to remember that public health is out there. If there's a grant, we'll write and ask for it, but we need nurses to step up and be available. So I just want you to remember public health nursing and that's it. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Claudia Benton?
This is Long, Mr. Johnson, and members of the board. I'm Claudia Benton. I'm a public health nurse, too. And Sharon really mentioned everything related to a lot of things that we do. Our job is very complex. My comment is that we really need nurses and we have, we are in so much need that sometimes we have been, we have to need higher nurses that are registered nurses. And the training is taking a lot, a lot of time, like if a PHN comes, that she already has a bachelor's degree, she comes to work with us in two or three months, she's ready to work on the streets with all the families. Instead of, if we had an RN, she may take six, eight months to be ready. And like I just said, I was talking with one of the RNs and she said that she didn't know how much demanding our job was, because she was used to go to the hospitals and just do their job and do what they needed to do. And here, you have to be thinking everything. So if the person say, I don't have water, you have to think about where do we, are we going to send them to get the water, where are we going to send to get the clothes, everything. So the need of public health nurses versus the salaries, it's kind of, we had a lot of competition with the hospitals related with the amount of money that they could get instead of the money that they could get when they work in public health. The other reason is like, if they work in a hospital, they work like 36 hours in a week. We work 40 hours one week, no, 44 hours one week, 36 hours one week. All other nurses work 40 hours a week. And we don't get paid like extra, extra time. We don't pay for working longer hours. Sometimes like we don't get any compensation. Sometimes we have to stay in the homes until 7 o'clock or something because there are emergency issues that are happening. And like, for example, I had a client that she was, she had a baby that was breached and she needed to have a C-section and the family didn't understand what they needed to do. They didn't want to go to the hospital to have the C-section. I had to go to the house and stay there until 7 o'clock to make sure that they understood, to make sure that they were taking the mom to the hospital that day to be evaluated. The other thing that is important is that because we are extending our services, we are getting more grants, we are working with the all different programs, we don't have anybody to cover those spots. Like I left Children Family Services working as a public health nurse in July and nobody has been covering me, my spot because they don't have anybody that is able to go to have, to work in Children Family Services. We are also, they had, they had put advertisements in state and at the state level in magazines and things like that to hire new public health nurses, but people come, they call, they even come here to the interview and they are totally motivated to work in public health because we are very excited and we really work hard with the community. But the problem is that when they come here and start looking at the income and also they start looking at the prices of the homes, they are not able to move in this area. So we are in great need. I think right now we need four or five public health nurses and we are not able to fulfill. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Short.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Johnson, I'd like to talk to you briefly this morning about excitement and pride. The leadership of the majority of the board is now clear and strong. The result is that amongst the lessees community, you see an excitement. You see an excitement and a willingness to spend money, an excitement to move on with where we see the harbor going. We're extremely optimistic about what has occurred recently. Not only are the lessees excited, but we're seeing within the boating community excitement and we're seeing pride within the boating community. You've heard some concerns about rules and regulations, but we're seeing, without any enforcement of the quote "rules and regulations," we're seeing boaters come in, take pride in the facilities and clean those facilities up, clean up around their boats and take pride in those, in the marinas. As a result, what you're seeing for the first time is clear and unfettered access for police and fire. This has not happened in some of the marinas for a substantial number of years and that is now clearly occurring. I'd like to thank on behalf of the lessees and the community, I'd like to thank the majority of the board for this clear and strong message to the boating community and to the harbor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert, excuse me, Robert Snyder's.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Robert Snyder's and I'm here today as the president of the Channel Islands Harbor Foundation. We were pleased to see the item on the agenda regarding the resolution to formalize the arrangement with the California Coastal Commission and the Boating Center for the Harbor. We are very excited about having this resolution approved so that we can proceed with this project and I want to assure you that the Harbor Foundation is prepared to move forward with that project on an expedited basis. So we urge your approval.
Madam Chair. May I just ask a question?
Sure.
And you don't have to produce it right now, but if you could give a report from the foundation on how the $60,000 was spent. This board voted to give the foundation $60,000. If you could do a written report, I would appreciate it.
Sure, we can do that.
That concludes all of the public comment cards and again, thank you for coming to speak to the board. At this time, we have board comments. Supervisor Parks? We've been off for two weeks. Board comments?
Can I wait for a little bit?
Oh, okay. Supervisor Flynn?
Thank you very much. I'd ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, which I submit to the clerk of the board. That's the extent of my comment.
Okay. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I'd also like to point out to the public, particularly the Ventura public, that we're all very concerned about, and it's good for the board to know, we're all very concerned about runoff from the burn areas. It burned right up to the houses and so we have some significant issues. I'm happy to report that our Watership Protection District is working closely with the city of Ventura, trying to analyze what needs to be done and how to spend the precious resources that we have in terms of moving forward. Talked with Jeff Pratt this morning before I came down and there are some challenging, challenging basins now that we're going to have to really hustle to try to keep clean. And I'll report back to the board more on that next week as they finalize exactly what they're going to do, but we need to move so that we get the work done before, before the rains come. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Michaels?
Yes, good morning. Had the pleasure and opportunity to attend CSAC Annual Conference last week and there was quite a bit of good information. Unlike years past, I think the CSAC is moving forward in a very positive manner and I think is, is being helpful to, to all of its members. The new director from the city of Tucson, I believe, is very responsive to all of the counties regardless of size or weight in numbers and size of the check that we send in as dues. And so I also attended the annual CalCog Directors Meeting, which was held at the same, during that same timeframe. There was a lot of information on what's going on up in the state in terms of transportation and, and the governor's Go California Plan, which we've all kind of read about. I apologize for not having time to get all of that information sorted out and ready so that each of the board members could have some, but I didn't return until Friday and I had to decorate my house over the weekend, so, sorry, I'll get that to you. Everybody knows how I feel about Christmas. But there is one, there's a couple of things that came up that I believe that this board would be interested in and I would like to bring forward next week resolutions. One would be in support of HR 4049. And I'll just read the title because we don't want to take all day. But it's to authorize the Secretary of Agriculture to enter into cooperative agreements with state and local governments to augment their efforts to conduct early detection and surveillance to prevent the establishment or spread of plant pests that endanger agriculture, the environment, and the economy of the United States. You know, we all lived through the MedFly years and years and years ago and with the drastic increase in importation of produce and live plants, I believe that this board should be supportive of the bill. The way that it's currently written, it's not a cost item to the counties, it is cooperative with the states and the counties. We know sometimes how the state is with implementation, but it's not a mandate at this point. And I do believe with agriculture being our number one industry still, that the board should be supportive. And so I will be bringing next week a copy of the bill, a summary, and then a resolution and request that the board support the chair in signing that and forwarding it to the author. The other thing that was brought up that is, I believe, of interest to us, but I have not had a chance to talk to Dr. Levin or Sheriff Brooks, but the county of Lake, and I believe the letter is actually in correspondence in our agenda today, talks about tightening the control on Sudaneferin. the control on Sudaniferin even more so than is. I know there's a lot of voluntary programs in the pharmacies that I have walked into in our county, where instead of having the product right there, you pull a little part and go up to the pharmacist and buy it over the counter that way. But I would like to get the board's kind of concurrence on working with Dr. Levin and Sheriff Brooks to see if the ordinance that was passed by Shasta County would be applicable and not duplicative of the efforts that are going on in Ventura County. So unless I hear somebody screaming and yelling, I will bring both of those items back to the board. Probably the ordinance, I can't get back until January, but certainly the resolution of support, I think I can get back by next week. And that's the first time I've gone to CSAC in a long time that things have interested me to bring them to the board. I always felt we were way out ahead of most of the counties in the state, and I still feel that way, actually. Anyway, the other thing I'd like to say is to thank Supervisor Long for all of the work she has done as a member of the board and a member of the Executive Committee of the Urban Counties Caucus, having, you know, been there and watched the amount of extra work that is required, and all of the work that she does on an ongoing monthly basis on our behalf and representing us is very greatly appreciated, and she does an outstanding job. And finally, I would ask that the board please adjourn in memory of these members of the community from the 4th District who have recently passed. They were both U.S. veterans of our military service, and they will be missed. Thank you.
And thank you. Appreciate the comments. Thank you so much. I too attended the CSAC Conference, and it was in San Jose, in downtown San Jose, and which is very much an office and very little retail or spas. So we really got to weigh in on those committee work with CSAC. Actually, it was a very, I thought it was a very fully-packed conference in the sense of the information available at the policy committees, and the one that Supervisor Michaels mentioned on the agricultural issue was very interesting, and I believe that that one actually would bring money into the state. So it would help our ag commissioner, and particularly because we have a commercial port, would be very useful in that, providing some, we would hope, some funds to help us with inspectors at the port, which is always challenging for us. I carried an issue forward to the Agricultural Committee, that's how I happened to learn of this other one, regarding the Owani Water Principles. And I carried that on behalf of the Local Government Commission, and it was amended slightly by the Agricultural Resource Committee, but it went forward to the Board of Directors, and it was adopted by CSAC. So I will be bringing that forward to the board for our consideration. It's now been adopted by both CSAC and the League of California Cities, and again, that's the Owani Water Principles. The other thing on the Government Finance Operations Policy Committee that I chair, once again, it was a fully-packed agenda, priority issues still with pension reform and Richmond's proposal, and the work that's being done in Sacramento on trying to get legislative attention on the pension reform and perhaps legislative solutions rather than go to an initiative process. That really was a strong message coming out of the GFNO. The other issue on that related to something that we've been working with, and that's health benefits and the escalating cost of health care. So I will be continuing to work on those and bring them forward to this board. I was honored again to be selected to serve on the Executive Committee on behalf of the Urban County Caucus for the CSAC body. So all in all, very good conference, and haven't been able to sort through the many papers I carried home, but I will, and I will be sending them out to you for your information so you can see what some of the issues discussed. The last thing I'd like to bring is adjourn in memory, and I have folks on this list, but one that I would like to note for the board because I think most of you had an opportunity to meet this fine gentleman who served on our planning commission for years, and that's John Arnold Rush. John passed away November 28th. He was one of the original founders and fathers of the formation of the city of Camarillo. He served as the mayor of Camarillo. He was awarded for many things in his many years of community service, serving as chair of the Boys and Girls Club, chair of the Camarillo Hospice. He was businessman of the year, volunteer of the year, and man of the year. Wonderful father, four wonderful children, world traveler with his wife, Pat. Just a genuine delightful man, standing room only at his service, and it really was a celebration of his life. And I'd like to acknowledge that at the board and ask us to adjourn in memory.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to congratulate you on your election, but also thank you. Year after year, you've been doing yeoman's work representing the board at CSAC, and that's no easy task. Takes a lot of time out of town and all that, and I just want you to know that I really appreciate it, and I'm sure the other board members do. Thank you.
Again, I'll send you lots of information.
I would also like to thank you for your service on CSAC, and I know that we have that recommendation coming before us today to reappoint you, and thank you for the time that you give to that.
Thanks.
Also, it's good to hear that you've adopted the Owani Water Principles from the Local Government Commission, something that I've watched as a member of the Local Government Commission for the last couple of years. I'd like to, we're working also on LAFCO to look at, looking at issues in a watershed perspective. Also regarding erosion after the fires, I did want to say that we got wonderful help from the Natural Resource Conservation Service in Bell Canyon. They brought in recommendations that really helped the homeowners, and they came right away, which was wonderful. So one of the recommendations that we have implemented is 2,000 sandbags that was needed for a particular property, and also working with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy regarding helping to put erosion measures over there at Amosim where it adjoins Bell Canyon. So it was good to see that assistance, and particularly with appreciation to the Fire Department that helped with the sandbag material. The material being primarily sand. I also wanted to mention that I'm asking that the board close in honor of the people on this list. Last night, Ed Masry died.
Oh.
And I want to get through this because I do want to say something about him. He is what I consider a modern-day hero. He came to us during the recall of a council member, Xena, offering us $50,000. We were faced with a recall with opponents spending over $600,000, and really came out of nowhere and helped a little guy, and just as he did for Hinckley with residents there, where he used his own personal money for a cause he really believed in. He was out there gathering signatures with us for SOAR, and also helped finance our campaign for SOAR, stood up against a road that the city of Thousand Oaks approved at a 12% grade, which, because of his efforts, led to some improvements, some safety improvements on that road. He came to city office when I was running for reelection, before I decided to run for reelection to city council. I came to him and I said, "It's a big decision to run for reelection, and I'm only going to do it if you run with me." And he didn't flinch and agreed to run with me, and I think he has just been a wonderful council member and public servant for the city of Thousand Oaks, helped us regarding a lot of the battles that we had there. He, along with myself, opposed a $12 million giveaway of redevelopment funds to a very affluent, rich developer in our town. Also opposed this Western Plateau Agreement because it removed all the senior and affordable housing out of Dos Vientos, which still hasn't been compensated for. But he's had a very long life, very fortunate to have lived as long as he had. He battled cancer, heart conditions, diabetes, and he was a fighter to the end. He has humor, his brilliance, his no-nonsense approach to things, his love for his wife and family, just a very, very special man. And I also, his willingness to get involved in things was just, not only in the issues, but just in life in general. I remember him, you know, helping when we were fighting a golf course out in Hill Canyon successfully. He just like hopped over the stream with me. I mean, you know, just willingness to jump into things. Some really interesting times that we had together. We once got interviewed when we were running for office. Some cable guy wanted us to come and interview on city issues, and we show up, and it was called Nigel in Bed. I didn't know that, so we have to like, the guy wanted us to get in bed to be interviewed. I go, "I'm not going to go lie in that bed." Ed Masry jumps in, takes the shoes off, jumps in bed. But just that idea that he's just had that tremendous spirit of life and willingness to get involved. And then I just wanted to close with the fact that the city of Thousand Oaks, Ed Masry was elected last year, he has a three-year term left. City of Thousand Oaks had the choice of holding a special election in April for a quarter million dollars, having a special election in June when the primary is happening, that'd be about $125,000, or having the election and the general election in this coming November, which would basically be free because we're already having a city council election in November. They chose none of those options, but rather to appoint for the entire three-year term the three members of the council who really haven't represented the side of politics that Ed Masry has been on. And it just, to me, it seems that if you're going to appoint someone, which they certainly can legally do, that appointment shouldn't be able to, should be only to the next general election. And I would just like to look into what can be done in Sacramento in terms of revising that, because residents have a right to vote for their leaders, and when you have a general election coming up, you should be able to vote for that person's seat. And so that's rather frustrating, so I wanted to point that one out, too. But I do want to close in memory of one of my mentors and a very good friend, and someone will be sorely missed. Thank you.
I hadn't heard. Thank you. Good words. Okay, that concludes our board comments, then, and we'll move ahead now to our regular agenda. We have some time before our 9:30 time certain, so our first item is item 33. And that is a resolution to clarify and reaffirm action taken by the board on July 12th regarding the Coastal Commission on Modifications, Channel Islands. Good morning, Ms. Krieger.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Lynn Krieger from the Harvard Department. And I think what we have today is a relatively simple item. I will just quickly run through it. There are two recommendations here. One is to approve the attached resolution to your board letter that specifically is intended to memorialize actions already taken on July 12th, 2005, agreeing to modifications. And second, to change the county's process to a resolution form for future decision-making. Secondly, I just want to mention to all of you that both this board letter and the resolution, which were written immediately upon our return from the last Coastal Commission meeting, have been reviewed, edited, and approved by coastal staff at all levels. So any minor changes, which is all they made, that they made, are incorporated into these documents, and I would urge you to keep them as they are. Third, there are enclosures with this letter, just for, really for purposes of clarification. I apologize to the clerk of the board because we seem to give them a heavy paper load every week. But it includes the Public Works Plan Amendment Certification Letter of June 13th of 2005. The letter from the Coastal Commission staff summarizing the modifications, also dated June 13th, 2005. And I would gather you probably recognize the great bulk of those modifications as being from the Environmental Impact Report, which was certified by this board in October of last year. The letter from county council is there from November 2nd. The Coastal Commission staff report that is from the November Commission meeting is your last item in the packet, and it informs the Coastal Commission that the Public Works Plan Amendment Number One, the first since 1986, has been certified. And this recommendation was confirmed by motion by Commissioner Riley, Coastal Commissioner Riley, and seconded by Commissioner Dan Seacord, and is only on a 30-day hold or until the meeting next week pending your confirmation of the action you have already taken. So unless there are questions?
Are there questions at this time?
Just make a comment on the issue.
Okay. Okay. Supervisor Parks, did you have a question?
Yes, looking at the wherethes at the top, this is a minor suggestion, if I may. It talks about that it evident, this matter evidences the board's ratification, the Harbor Director's acceptance of the Coastal Commission's final certification. I'll go, whereas the board's July 12th action to receive and file the board letter from Harbor Director Lynn Krieger and its refusal to hear the matter further at its meeting evidences the board's ratification. If we could change it to evidences the intent by the board to ratify the Harbor Director's acceptance, because that was our intention.
I'll turn to county council on that. Do you see a problem? All right. The act.
Yes, I would suggest that the board not change this. It has been reviewed by the Coastal Commission staff. It was prepared by my office in consultation with the Harbor Department staff. We think that it's an appropriate rendition of what the Coastal Commission is looking for.
I was under the impression that the Coastal Commission said it didn't ratify, that the board's action wasn't a ratification of the conditions. So that, we thought it was, so that's why I was saying the evidence, the intent of the board that it would ratify.
Now, if I could answer that, in the staff report of November 2nd, what it says in the third paragraph, this is the staff report of the Coastal Commission staff, is, says that the, I'm looking for it, quote, that the county of Ventura's certification of the above- referenced PWP amendment is legally adequate, and this is being reported to the commission. So they did find it legally adequate, and they did act to uphold the executive director's certification. Once the commission acts and the county accepts, it's the executive director who certifies, and it's only if the commission does not concur that it is not certified. So the Public Works Plan Amendment has been certified, it's merely on hold for confirmation because of the number of questions that were raised by some members of the public.
So this documents just what the Coastal Commission wants in order to proceed?
Yes.
And the wording on it is something that they agree with?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
At least three members of their staff have reviewed it and approved it.
Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, it's really important to get in step with what is legally required, and I brought this issue to the board two times, and the board did not accept the fact that we had not done this legally. Twenty-two conditions and six, 22 modifications and six conditions kind of indicate that maybe the commission was concerned about this project. Usually you have conditions in order to make the project try to fit with whatever you're doing. My concern about this letter, say, on page four, and it kind of goes all the way through, is the defensive nature of doing what is being done today. For example, it is important that your board bear in mind that this resolution merely memorializes. And then on page five, it kind of corrects that and says that your board adopt the resolution. The thing about it is, is if you made a mistake, simply say a mistake was made. Dr. Seacord, I walked out with him, the commission took a break, and he said, "It's very easy just to say you made a mistake." And not to get on the bad side of the Coastal Commission, because the Coastal Commission was, I could tell, was very upset about the county. And the chair of the Coastal Commission is a very accomplished person. She is a professor of law at Stanford University, and here she is volunteering her time to do this. Anyway, it's too defensive, I think, and if it gets into hands of the Coastal Commission, it just does nothing but irritate people. That's my comment.
Do you have cards on this?
Pardon me? Yes, I do. Any other comments or questions at this time?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki Finan?
Good morning, Supervisors and Mr. Johnston. I, we provided last week a copy of a letter and a one-page resolution as a substitution for, I'm speaking on behalf of the Beacon Foundation, I'm sorry, for your consideration this morning. I think the reason that we did that is because we believe that many of the items are disputable, except in the resolution, and kind of rewrites history. It's not necessary to, to compound all this stuff and keep going forward with it. What you really need to do is just, you know, stop and, and figure out what, what the purpose of all this is for, what, why are you doing this? The resolution is necessary to, and, and actually, it's part, it's, it's not that ours are out of sync, Mr. Johnston, it's maybe somebody didn't actually follow the guidelines that you already have in place, which say to prove by, to follow this, it's probably mirrors the same language that the, that the counties are, that the states' requirements are. But it says that you should formally take action. I provided wording of that to you, and I'll be glad to drop this here, but it's, it's section 8.1, 84-5.2, Coastal Commission action. And it talks about what your requirements as the county are when, when you take things to the Coastal Commission, and you didn't follow your guidelines. That's what we've asked you all along to do, to follow the rules, so that there's someplace that we can, someplace that we can say, "Well, here's where you're not following it," and then we have something to go to the Coastal Commission for enforcement action. So all these nasty comments and trying to get people to, you know, to adopt a resolution that actually isn't necessary is, is just self-serving and kind of correcting the record that was actually out of place. Mrs. Caldwell told Mr. Johnston when he apologized for being, for having this thing be out of order, that, that the County of Ventura's actions were out of sync with the state of California. That should bother all of you. But then somehow it got, it got changed into, into this, and it rewrites everything that actually happened. There was a 12-member, the 12 members of the Coastal Commission voted against the County of Ventura. And because of legal actions that are pending, they went into closed session and tried to come up with a way for you guys to be saved, and then you guys come up with this to insult them with, I think it's really bizarre. You have other things that are going to go before the Coastal Commission. I've gone to at least 40 times to the Coastal Commission in 10 years, and I can tell you, it's very rare that you have 12 people all voting unanimously for something, and what they're voting for was that you guys had not fulfilled your obligation to the public trust. And I, and I think that you owe it to the people to stop doing what you're doing, realize that you have some responsibility here, and your, things are causing this. You have responsibility, your staff has responsibility, and somebody isn't doing things right. So as a, "Stop all this garbage," and in the, this is a recommended resolution, and I hope that you all had an opportunity to look at it. I spoke to Gary Timm of the Coastal Commission yesterday, and he says that this resolution is acceptable to them and would satisfy them. What, I asked him about the resolution that the county had put forward in his, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but he said it had an awful lot more stuff than it actually needed to have. So I don't know where we're going with this, what the point of these things are on, on the staff report and stuff like that, but it's not necessary. And I hope that you will think it over and actually pass a resolution that would be respectful of, of your, of your responsibilities and, and the public that you serve. Thanks.
Randy Short.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston. I'm here on behalf of, as an officer of the Friends of Channel Islands to briefly and consistently say we strongly support this resolution and ask you to support this resolution as well. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further public comment cards? Okay, back to the board. Questions? Discussion?
I, I just have a comment, and I'll be glad to make a motion. I know that there was concern that because we didn't adopt the resolution regarding all 22 conditions, even though that was the intent, that we may not be forthright and do those condition requirements. So I, I think there's a legitimate reason why people were concerned when they didn't see the formal adoption of the conditions, even though it was our intent. So I think this does help clarify the county's intent to see that we do meet the conditions established by the Coastal Commission, which I think makes the project better. So with that, since in recognition of staff's indication that this is the resolution that the Coastal Commission agrees with, their staff agrees with, then I will go ahead and move for formal adoption of the resolution.
Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion, comments?
Just, just want to confirm. County Council, you've given all of the issues out there, the fact that there are lawsuits, and we've been in front of the commission, we have, you've seen all this. Your strong recommendation to us is to adopt this resolution, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm in favor of the motion.
Okay. Mr. Johnston, comment?
And to maybe go to the heart of the matter, the Coastal Commission gave approvals to the Boating Center with 22 modifications to protect the environment. Based on advice from legal counsel, your board filed that report on the delegated authority that had been given to our Harbor Director to accept those. When the thing, the matter was brought before you, it showed six changes to be made. Those were technical changes in order to incorporate the 22 modifications. It was never the intent of staff or your board, and I represented this to the commission, to equivocate at all on acceptance of those 22 modifications to protect the environment. The commission, as I saw it at the hearing, their concern was, as we here locally were in sort of a squabble amongst ourselves and creating some doubt as to what the board's action was. The purpose of the resolution today is to make it crystal clear that unequivocally we are accepting the 22 modifications as imposed by the Coastal Commission in order to go forward with the, with the project.
Just to clarify, unequivocally, we did accept before. We're just reaffirming that we accepted.
Right. Which is what was represented in the hearing. And this is confirming that that is what we have done, and saying it in those words as opposed to the six, what's the six, what do we call those when they, the technical changes that were made in all the documents?
Are you talking about the PWP amendment notification from Ms. Krieger?
The discrepancy between six and 22, which Supervisor Flynn pointed out, and it did raise the question, is that why are there two different numbers? And they were two different subjects. One was implementing the other. This is just simply to confirm that that is exactly what was taking place, and that is what will take place. One of the things that I found kind of interesting in this whole process at the commission and at this level is that if we do not do those, even after all of this is done, if someone doesn't comply with the conditions, then you're in violation regardless of what anybody's agreed to. So it's not only agreeing to it, it's actually doing it, which is what is true of all conditional use permits and zoning rules that we, you know, we adopt. Doesn't mean that everybody within the zone actually complies with everything, but there is an enforcement procedure. In this case, there is, there was never any reservation about doing that, and it's really got us tied up more in procedure than in the, in the purpose. And so I would strongly encourage the board to adopt this and allow us to move forward.
Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, I think we should move forward too. But at the same time, it is an absolute mystery to me why we're doing this, that we're doing today when we should have done this when it came to the board, I think, in July. I mean, it's a mystery. It's a rather simple step. You put the modifications here, and you have them in the form of a resolution that you're going to comply with them. That's pretty simple. And yet, yet it wasn't done. If you read the section of the law that the Coastal Commission has to follow, is mandated to follow, it makes it very clear that it has to come back through a resolution, not the way that was represented here at the board. And, and the way was wrong, was a mistake, and that's why we're here today talking about something several months later. It should have been done, I think, back in July. It's a mystery. I call it a mystery. What, why not do it properly? The other thing I think we should do is, is I would hope that we'll have a plan for these, implementation of these conditions. And I would hope that we'll have a cost number down, so we know what it's going to cost. That's not required by the Coastal Commission at all. The other thing I would point out, why be negative? Why continue fighting with the Coastal Commission? Just simply do what they say, follow Dr. Seacord's advice, follow the chair's advice, and, and I think it'd be better.
There's a motion and a second.
I want to say one more thing. I would hope that the LA Times can have an article about this situation.
There's a motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered.
And that's a positive.
Yeah. And just comments I would make, I, I attended the meeting when the conditions were, were put forth by the Coastal Commission, and the director and myself and all those present who were there to hear the item publicly agreed with the conditions. And they do provide stronger environmental protections. And it was a, certainly my understanding at the time and the participation of it, that it was a thorough and final action. But today's action, if it's needed because of the internal squabbles that have been raised for the Coastal Commission's comfort level, then we've acted. Thank you. Next, we'll move to our 9:30 time certain item. And it is my pleasure to present this item. And I believe in the audience I have Charlotte Olbert from the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and President Chris Mann. Is Chris, oh, I didn't see.
It'll be Steve Kaufman.
Okay.
The Firefighters Association.
Good, thank you. And it is a pleasure to present a resolution on behalf of the board declaring, recognizing December 4th through the 10th as Muscular Dystrophy Association Firefighter Appreciation Week. The Muscular Dystrophy Association is a voluntary health agency. It's a dedicated partnership between scientists and concerned citizens who aim at conquering neuromuscular diseases that affect more than a million Americans. The firefighters have been working, the Muscular Dystrophy Association, in their fight against this disease for 53 years. It's infamous, the boot, the boot. And in 2005, the US firefighters raised more than $13 million throughout the country in support of the association's causes. And the Ventura County Fire Department is expecting from 50 to 75 firefighters to fill the boot for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. This year, the two locations are going to be in Ojai at the Highway 33 and 150, and Simi Valley at the intersection of Sycamore and Cochrane. Through the exemplary daily service to our communities and their dedication to the association, our local firefighters have contributed greatly to the well-being of all of our citizens, raising last year $30,000 in one day. So in honor of the effort of our local firefighters, in honor of the Muscular Dystrophy Association efforts in fighting this disease, we are proud to sponsor December 4th through the 10th as a firefighter appreciation week in conjunction with the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and take great pleasure in recognizing this week and in appreciation for a job well done, the ongoing work that is done by the association and by our firefighters. And if you please step to the microphone for a few words, I'll come down to present this.
I just personally, on behalf of Muscular Dystrophy and myself, I have a 13-year-old little boy that does have this disease. We were out in Ojai this weekend doing Fill the Boot with the firefighters. And between Ojai and Simi Valley, they raised over $20,000. And we just really appreciate everything that you guys do, and I personally appreciate you all very much. Thank you.
Would you please introduce who's here?
Absolutely. Madam Chair, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Steve Kaufman. I am the Vice President in Charge of Charities for our Ventura County Professional Firefighters Association. Captain Bob Towers, Engineer Ray Ruiz, and firefighter Randy Globberman, and then Chief Bob Roper is standing behind us. You know, it's a, it really is a privilege when we have incidents like the Topanga Fire or the Ventura Fire, and as firefighters, we see the support that the community gives us during the course of us fighting the fire. And so it's neat to be able to have an event like this where we can give back to the community and really make a difference. One of the things that's neat about muscular dystrophy is the $20,000 or more that we raised this year actually stays in the tri-county area. And this past year, we actually got to see it in action. What they do is every year, they do a summer camp for the kids, and all the kids that are affected by the neuromuscular diseases come out for a week. And they did it this year in Simi Valley at the Brandeis Institute. And so we had the privilege of being able to go out there with the fire engines one day, and it was a real humbling experience for us to be able to see, you know, what we're working for every year when we do the Fill the Boot. In that 53 years, they've raised over $200 million to fight neuromuscular diseases, and that's something that as a fire service, we're really proud of. So on behalf of all the firefighters with the Ventura County Professional Firefighters Association, I just want to extend a thank you to the community, because they're really the ones that make this happen. We just help facilitate it. So we, we really do have a great community out there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, this Saturday, when I was driving up to Albertson's to buy my groceries, I happened to see Steve in the center median on Sycamore, or Cochrane, and there were, I couldn't count them all because they were running around trying to catch all the drivers with their windows down and their hands out with dollar bills. And we contributed. I would not pass by the boot without contributing. But it, it's really a fun thing to watch and see. And I know a couple of, three years ago, maybe longer, I helped count, you know, I worked the corner. And it was amazing. Those boots are stuffed till you they can't accept another dollar bill, and there were several hundred-dollar bills, and 50s and 20s, and it was truly amazing how willing the community is to give when the firefighters are asking. And so you did a great job this weekend, and I hope that you continue to do that. Community appreciates it. And you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. All right. Now we're back to our regular agenda, and we will move to item 34, which is to approve position allocations for behavioral health. Good morning, Ms. Scholman.
Good morning, Chair, Long Supervisors, Mr. Johnston, Linda Scholman, Director of Behavioral Health. Today, the item before you is to ask that three positions be added to the behavioral health budget this year, two social workers and a mental health associate. Those positions would work at the Phoenix schools. I know that your board is very aware of the success of the Phoenix schools. Part of that success is the client-to-staff ratio. And as the Phoenix schools have expanded, because of the great demand for their program, we have not expanded our staff because of all of the related issues around the 36-32 programming. We are able this year to recommend that we increase the staffing. As part of the department's efforts in trying to resolve the long-term effects of the 36-32 program, we've worked really hard with the schools to shift as much of the funding over to Medi-Cal for this program as possible, and to allow us to take the staff who maybe aren't working a full day in a schoolroom to go back and see Medi-Cal kids, and put their costs and increase our Medi-Cal funding. And because of that, we will be able to do the second part of this, which is increase our projections of Medi-Cal revenue enough to offset the costs of these positions, although the positions themselves. Although the positions themselves will primarily be funded through the SB 90 and our budget, so it's a little complicated, but anyway, I can answer any questions.
As usual, complicated questions.
Second.
Motion is second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Item 35, approval of mid-year revisions to the library budget. Melinda Gates Foundation, good morning, Ms. Kreisman.
Good morning, Chair Long, Board Members, Starrett Kreisman from the Ventura County Library. In the past, it has been necessary for both the Library Commission and your Board to approve an adjusted budget for the county library. This has been due to state actions, which normally come later than our budget approval process, and which in the past have tended to be negative on the library budget. However, I'm happy to report to you today that for the second year in a row, not only has there been no negative state budget action, but actually, there's been a slightly positive one, which I'll mention in a moment. The Library Commission has found an adjusted budget useful. It allows them to consider fund balance, grants that might have been approved in the interim, and financial information that's just not available when we begin our budget process. Today, there's some good news on the adjusted budget front. The Public Library Fund, which is our money we do get from the state, which has been declining for years, went up $30,000. Not much, but it's headed in the right direction. We have been approved for the $52,000 Gates Grant, which I was here a few weeks ago to seek your approval for that submission, and we have been notified that we will receive that money to upgrade our equipment from the original Gates Grant. And the library system now has a reserve of over $1.2 million, which is extremely good news, because for quite a few years, we've had a very small, next-to-nothing reserve, and this has been a source of some problem for us. So I'm very, very happy to report to you that this is an adjusted budget with some very nice items in it.
Absolutely. Questions? No cards.
Okay. Move the recommended action.
Motion is second, to approve the recommended action. Any objection to that motion? Hearing none, so ordered. And I'd like to say thank you, one, for staying with us and working so hard during some very slim tough times, and also to publicly say that the Library Commission at its last meeting did an evaluation of Ms. Kreisman, and she just had outstanding, outstanding support and compliments and kudos for her good work. She has weathered some tough times, and I hope that we continue to have good times with the Public Library Fund. We'll continue to work to do so. Outstanding work, we thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I'd like to join those comments, too. We're very proud of the work that you do, and you have had a tough time, but you've stood there, and you braved a lot of hardships, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
And we thank you, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 36, information annual review of our developer fees as of June 30th, 2005.
Thank you, Chair Long.
Yes.
If you'll recall, on November 22nd, the information was provided to your Board. At this time, we're asking you to complete the annual review and find that there's a reasonable relationship between the fees and the purpose for which they were committed, and that they were identified and designated as required by Government Code Sections 66,000, 66,001, and 66,006. Supervisor Parks, you asked three questions from the last meeting, understood those to involve traffic mitigation impact fees, the Sheriff's $3 million for the East County facility, and GSA Quimby Fee Distribution. So I asked the members of those departments to be present to respond to your questions.
Are there questions? You're going to give some information here? Good morning, Mr. Coons.
Yes, with regards to public works with the traffic impact mitigation fees, the City of Santa Paula had not signed or taken it to their council as yet. They wish to have traffic impact mitigation fees for their city adopted first. This week, they're finishing up that action with their city council, so they have their traffic impact mitigation fees for their city established now, and they will take the agreement to their city council in the month of January for our joint agreement, for reciprocal. The City of Port Juaniemi, they requested, the city manager requested to be last in taking it to a city council, and I informed him he was last now. He said he would also take it to the city council in the month of January. The City of Moor Park, a year and a half ago, took it to city council. City council approved the agreement. The city manager has held that agreement. Numerous requests for meeting to, he said that after the council did that, there was a concern over some interpretation of some minor language that he wanted to have accomplished. I pushed him on that, and so there's a meeting next week to have that minor language addressed, and he said he'd be able to take it to his city council to correct that minor language in the month of January also. Those were the three that you had requested. If there's any other questions, I'd be pleased to respond.
I think it's outstanding that you've got a meeting with the city manager of Moor Park, you know, if their council approved it, it should come to be, and I'm really glad to see that, particularly as they have some major traffic keep fees that may be coming on the line if some projects go through there.
The city manager did say that he has been collecting those fees since they accepted the agreement on our behalf, and so he did commit that they have implemented it and accepted those fees.
That's great, so they will pay us retro.
That's what the city manager said.
Okay. There's also, we have a chart, Attachment 3, which talks about the transportation of funds that we have received, and for different, I guess, these are monies that are then transferred back to the cities. And I know that the cities receive a lot heftier, well, at least the ones that I've watched, fee for traffic impacts in a project in the unincorporated county, in Santa Rosa Valley, for example, and another area in my district, Ventu Park. They're receiving about 10 times the amount in traffic fees for a single-family house than what the county receives for that same single-family house. So a house built in Santa Rosa Valley, unincorporated area, pays 10 times the fee to the City of Thousand Oaks than what our county has. And I know one of the things we were waiting for was the update of our general plan, circulation element. So now that we have done that, I'm really hoping that we can move forward quickly in looking at, making sure that those fees are in line with what our costs are, and just by looking at the tremendous disparity between what cities charge for impacts to their road system and what we charge, we're potentially losing hundreds of thousands of dollars, or that's about what the disparity is. So I look forward to looking at revising those ordinances so that we can, if necessary, and I think it is necessary, receive more funds for our road system from development in the unincorporated county.
I'd be pleased to meet with you on that. I think that the result may be that we'll be lowering our fees in that area of Santa Rosa, because they're project-based on the costs, and I can go through this more in detail at another time, but we will be adjusting the fees based on the general plan, but it may be, in some cases, we'll be lowering the fees.
We're getting, you know, $17 a unit, and they're getting $1,000 a unit, and we all have the same, you know, we all have the same roads to fix and put traffic lights and maintain and all that, so I look forward to meeting with you on that then. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions?
I have talked with GSA regarding the Quimby fees. There's something called the Quimby Sphere of Influence, which may not be your normal sphere of influence that I would like to look at. We do have some $60,000, for example, from Lake Sherwood that we're going to give to the park district, but I'm wondering if it could be used for a park in Santa Rosa Valley that we're working on, but it may be outside the Quimby Sphere of Influence, so I'll get more information on that. And then also, there is in here, it mentions, and I think we'll just update it for the next year, which is that there's funds committed for providing a substation in Oak Park, $100,000 have been sitting there probably for quite some time. It mentions in the report that the earliest estimated construction is 2005, 2006. That's, you know, no way near reality in terms of building a substation, so we can update that. They're looking at $3 million, and that probably is an old figure, to build a substation in Oak Park. So I'm just wondering, and I'll get more information on that, about how we go about doing that, or if we should put those funds for another type of facility use, hopefully in Oak Park, too. So that's something I'll talk with the Sheriff's Department about. So I appreciate the time in looking at this a little bit more thoroughly, and maybe one good that came from it is that we are going to push forward on getting Moor Park fees. So with that, I would ask that we receive the information on attachments 1, 2, and 3, and the recommendations in the staff report, all three.
Motion is second. Any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 37, appointment to Ventura County Campaign Finance Ethics Commission. Good morning, Ms. Tompkins.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members. Mr. Johnston, Del Tompkins with the County Executive Office. The item before you today is a recommendation from the independent selector for the Campaign Finance Ethics Commission to appoint Margaret Peterson to fill an unexpired term for the District 4 representative to the commission. As required by the ordinance, Supervisor Michaels submitted three nominees to the independent selector for consideration, and at this time, your Board has the choice of either accepting the recommendation of the independent selector, or you may consider appointing one of the other two nominees. The term that will be filled will expire in July of 2008.
Questions?
Move approval.
Motion is second. Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you.
Okay, time for one more. Item 38, adoption of memorandum of agreement between the Ventura County Ventura and the Criminal Justice Attorneys Association. Good morning, Mr. Nicole.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Today, we start the first of our two readings of the adoption of the agreement between the Criminal Justice Attorneys Association of Ventura County and the County of Ventura. You have been provided the amendment to our original submitted letter with the assistance of the Auditor Controller. We needed to be sure, we put the language in regarding the impact on the retirement system. That will be a standard inclusion in all of our letters in conformance with the Government Code. As you know, this provides for a single one-year agreement with criminal justice attorneys based on a COLA value of 4%. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding this agreement.
Other questions? I don't hear any questions. There's a motion and a second. And again, this is to first hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. Motion is second. Hearing no objection to that, so ordered. This will be placed on our December 13th agenda for a second hearing, final adoption.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 39, keep squeezing, one more in. Item 39, certification of special statewide election held on November 8th, 2005. Item...
Second.
Motion is second. Hearing no objection or presentation, so ordered.
Probably wasn't expecting it quite so quickly.
That's true. Item 40, Supervisor Parks.
I'd like to move that we reappoint Supervisor Kathy Long to the Cal State Association of Counties. She's done an excellent job for us, representing the interests of the County of Ventura, and I really appreciate, as we mentioned earlier, the time that she's spent on this. I know it's a lot of extra work, and we have a lot of work to do, as it is, but I think your representation and your respect by your peers says a lot, and we appreciate your service. If you will take it, I would love to see you nominated and approved for this. Continue.
Motion is a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered, and I thank you. I do look forward to serving, so, again, thank you. All right, now, we have a 10 o'clock time certain. Anyone need a break?
Mm-hmm.
Can we take a two-minute break?
Mm-hmm.
Then we'll go to Amendment of Waits and Measures, Device Registration Ordinance, Item 28. Okay? Thank you. Board members, if we could come back to the dais, and we'll move on with our agenda. Okay, our 10 o'clock time certain, item number 28, is Amendment of Waits and Measures Device Registration Ordinance.
Yes, Marty Robinson with Resource Management Agency. Good morning. Today, your board, whoops, sat in the right place. Today, your board is being asked to amend the county ordinance relating to commercial weighing and measuring devices. State law mandates the annual inspection of commercial weighing and measuring devices, and in so mandating, provides a method for local government to offset some of its costs through a fee-based system covered in the Business and Professions Code. In October, the state adopted AB 889, changing several sections of the Business and Profession Codes as it relates to weights and measures. One such change is a restructuring of the basis for charging device registration fees for the majority of inspection devices. This is pretty significant, since there has been no change in the maximum since 1994. A comparison of the old method and the new method are provided on pages 2 and 3 of the board letter. The maximum fee rates include a three-year phase-in period. Additionally, staff is recommending that, in the ordinance, that fees associated with co-located devices, as well as those for farmers' markets that can be brought into the facility for registration, actually only pay a 50% fee. Under the current system, the county collects 50% of the cost of the program. Under the new system, the percentage of cost recovery will increase, but even at year three, it is estimated that we will still be only at about 80% of total cost recovery. These are the changes that are reflected in the ordinance before you today, and I think it's here for first reading. After taking public testimony and answering your questions, I also have a couple of other comments about the implications they'd be for the future, so with that, open to your questions and any other community comments.
Okay, any questions at this time? I have one public speaking request card. No questions from the board? Okay, we'll open the public speaking opportunity, and I'd invite Stephen Murphy to step forward and speak to the board.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stephen Murphy. I am the Senior Vice President and Chief Operating Officer for Glacier Water Services. We're a California-based company headquartered in San Diego County. We operate a number of water vending machines throughout 40 states. We have about 220 machines in the County of Ventura, and this matter is obviously very important to us. Typically, our machines are in front of a grocery store, and inside each machine, there's one or more measuring devices. We're in support of the ordinance. We thank Mr. Dopirdang for his willingness to listen to our concerns. We believe the compromise is fair and appropriate, and, again, we're in support of it. We appreciate your time and consideration, so, any questions?
Let's see, I thank you for coming to speak to us. Appreciate the input. Back to Ms. Robinson, any questions?
No other comments on the ordinance itself, but I did want to bring to your attention some future implications for AB 8 and Waits and Measures. One of the other changes, excuse me, AB 889, one of the other changes has been, basically, it removes the sunset on the administrative penalty system, and that administrative penalty system is a very valuable tool in terms, from our perspective, of keeping people out of the courts and resolving issues in a fashion, and also, the violators appreciate the fact that they're not sent off to the DA. So that is another aspect of the change in the law. Another one is the implementation of a protocol on the scanner systems. That is not covered in this particular ordinance, and we will be evaluating the implications of that and coming back to your board probably about June. You may recall, we talked about increasing scanner fees this summer, pulled the item off the agenda, talked with representatives from the Grocers Association, who, in fact, had advocated for us to wait until this project came forward. So what we propose to do is use the revenue here to offset general fund costs, and then look at the implications of the new protocol, which is a more defined protocol, requires the selection of additional products in the scanner arena. So we'll return to your board after we evaluate the implications of that in June. But with that, I recommend that you guys move, excuse me, that your board move forward once you're over.
Okay, all right, that's before the board for first reading action.
I would move approval, and I'd just like to comment a thank you to the department for working with those people who are going to be impacted by a raise in fees, and I think that the compromise is a good one, and it's always nice to hear an item like this where the industry is actually saying that they appreciate the compromise, and they're in support, as opposed to having the boardroom full of very angry people. So I hope, when we're working on the scanner thing, that the same type of approach is used, and there's, you know, good work with the industry that's going to be impacted. But thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, before the board? There's a motion and a second. Any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered on the first reading of the ordinance. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the County of Ventura, State of California, amending Article 9 to Chapter 2, Division 6 of Ventura County Code, Ventura County Ordinance relating to commercial weighing and measuring instruments.
Thank you. And, okay, our next, thank you so much for being here, and staff, thank you for the work. Item 29, 10 o'clock time certain, Conservation Partial Amendments to the General Plan and to the Non-Coastal Zoning Ordinance and Subdivision Ordinance. You're up, Ms. Malley.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Debbie Malley, and I'm from the Planning Division. I'm here to present the Conservation Partial Amendments. We originally brought these Conservation Partial Amendments to you on May 17th, and the recommendations that we're bringing forward to you today incorporate the various changes and suggestions that you made to us at the meeting of May 17th. We did take these amendments to the Planning Commission on October 20th, and they approved them, recommended them to you with one minor change, which I'll get into shortly.
What was the vote on the Planning Commission?
Unanimous.
Thanks.
The purpose of these amendments are to remove barriers to conservation organizations' acquisition of properties with biological significance. Basically, we, it was brought to our attention that the regulations in our zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance were inhibiting the ability of organizations to buy the property that they wanted. It seemed not to be able to, here we go. And particularly, the issue is with the minimum lot area requirement, that you have to buy a property of so many acres, and that was inhibiting the purchase of property for conservation purposes. Typically, what happens is you have a property, say, in the AE zone with a minimum 40-acre requirement, and the vast majority of the property is agricultural land, but maybe there's a small area in the bottom of the river, which is not agriculturally viable. With the current minimum lot area requirement, the owner would either have to sell to the conservation agency the entire parcel, including the orchards or the agricultural area, which the conservation organization doesn't want, or perhaps they simply refuse to sell the property because they're not willing to part with the viable agricultural area. And so what we're doing is we're recommending that we add a conservation parcel exception to the various minimum lot area requirements that we have. And there's two basic principles that we've adhered to in drafting these amendments. Either the conservation parcel or the remaining piece, the non-conservation parcel, or both, can be below the minimum lot area, and there is a requirement that the conservation parcel must be transferred to a qualifying conservation organization and be maintained in open space in perpetuity. So those are the two basic principles of our new conservation parcel procedure. I just want to give you a brief example of what we're looking at here, just one example. This aerial photograph does represent land in Ventura County, but I've altered the parcel line, so it doesn't represent any particular parcel. It's a hypothetical example. And what you see here is a parcel of 100 acres, the northern 80 of which is good-quality agricultural land, and the southern 20 acres is basically river bottom, not usable for agricultural purposes, but valuable for its biological significance. Under existing regulations, an agency would have to either buy the entire 100 acres, or at least 40 acres, and then have to figure out what to do with that extra 20 acres of agricultural land. With the new procedure, they can subdivide this property, the conservation agency can buy the river-bottom 20 acres, and the farmer can continue to farm the remaining 80 acres of quality agricultural land. So the recommended actions that we're bringing to you today are to amend the general plan, the non-coastal zoning ordinance, and the subdivision ordinance. And essentially, the substantive amendments are in the subdivision ordinance, because that's where the regulations for subdivisions are. Also, I need to point out that, as usual, when we were processing these amendments, we noticed the need for various cleanup amendments, and so in addition to the strict conservation parcel amendments, we're bringing forward various cleanup amendments. Particularly, when we were looking at the lists of exceptions to the minimum lot area requirements that are currently in the general plan, in the non-coastal zoning ordinance, in the subdivision ordinance, they didn't conform. They had some that were in some area and some that were not, and so what we're doing is we're trying to bring all those lists into conformance. The general plan and the non-coastal ordinance will have the same list, and the subdivision ordinance will simply refer to the lists that are in those two documents. Also, in the non-coastal zoning ordinance, as we were going through our lot area requirements, we noticed they were kind of scattered around in different articles, so we're trying to bring them all together into one article. Starting with the general plan amendments, and these are displayed in Exhibit 3A. We're adding, for the conservation parcel amendment, we're adding a lot area exception to the existing list. Basically, parcels subdivided for natural resource conservation purposes, in accordance with the parcel map waiver conservation subdivision process, would be exempted from the minimum lot area requirements. And as part of the cleanup amendments, we're adding an exception for agricultural waterwells. That exception is now already in the zoning ordinance, but not in the general plan, so we're bringing that forward to make those two lists match. Moving on to the non-coastal zoning ordinance, again, we are adding a single exception for the conservation parcel amendments, adding an exception to the existing lot area list. The cleanup amendments for the non-coastal zoning ordinance are a little bit more complex. First of all, in Section 8103-0, we're removing a cross-reference note. We're basically trying to take all those cross-reference notes out of the ordinance as adopted language, and then we bring them back in as editorial notes, which don't require formal adoption by your board. It makes it a little bit easier to keep them up to date. Then we are bringing the new, the existing, excuse me, lot area requirements from Article 6, and we're bringing them into Article 3. Basically, we repeal everything 8103-2 through 8103-5. We bring the new list of exceptions in as 8103-2, and then we adopt, all the other ones moving up one number. So instead of 8103-2, 8103-5, it now becomes 8103-3 to 8103-6. And we have also put a few, cleaned up the exceptions to make them a little bit clearer. We have not changed the intent, just kind of reworded them a bit to make them a little bit clearer, and if anybody has any questions on the legislative language on that, I would be happy to answer it. But basically, we're centralizing the list in one place, we're bringing the list into conformance with the general plan, and we are adding the conservation parcel exception to the list. The subdivision ordinance, as I said, that's where the real action is, because that's where subdivisions occur. As far as the cleanup amendments, the only thing we're doing in the subdivision ordinance is we're removing the section numbers in the definition section. As the subdivision ordinance now stands, there's a separate section number for each definition. Every time you bring in a new definition, you'd have to renumber or do subsections, so we're just removing those. Then getting into the real heart of these amendments, we're adding a new section for parcel map waiver conservation subdivisions. The parcel map waiver is a slightly simpler, more streamlined process than a tentative map or a regular parcel map, so it's a fairly simplified process, and we're allowing this simplified process to occur in the case of conservation subdivisions with various requirements, findings, and limitations. We start with definitions. We have a definition of what a conservation parcel must be in order to meet the requirements. It has to have significant biological resources or be capable of being restored to the status of having significant biological resources. It will have to be acquired and maintained as permanent open space by a qualified conservation organization. There will have to be a deed restriction or an easement requiring that it be used for natural resource purposes in perpetuity, and it may be nonconforming as to size. So those are our definitions or requirements for what a conservation parcel must be. Next, we have a definition of a conservation organization. We want to make sure that when this parcel or these parcels are transferred to a conservation organization, that they are a legitimate agency. It has to be a public conservation agency or a private nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization whose purpose is preservation and protection of land in its natural condition. It has to be either statewide, national, or international organization, or a local community-based organization with membership of at least 500 people or businesses. And I need to bring up a proposed amendment that was brought to our attention here at the last minute before this meeting. The requirement of at least 500 people or businesses' membership, if you're looking at a public agency, the requirement, the membership requirement is irrelevant. Public agencies, such as COSCA, don't really have members. So what we want to do is, we're recommending that that second clause of the definition of conservation organization be revised to read, "If it is a private organization, then it must be either a statewide, national, or international organization, or a local community-based organization with membership of at least 500 people or businesses." So basically, we're revising this requirement to refer only to private organizations, since it really doesn't apply to a public organization.
Wouldn't you want it also to apply to nonprofits? So the private or nonprofit?
Private, nonprofit, or profit, yeah. We can add that word. It'd be private, profit, or nonprofit. Okay, private, nonprofit, you're right. I can't imagine there would be one. "If it is a private nonprofit organization, then," so that would be the new wording?
But there's not a for-profit conservation organization.
Yeah, I can't imagine there would be.
Can anybody out there?
We wish. Yeah, so, again, just to be clear, that second provision of the definition of conservation organization would be revised to read, "If it is a private nonprofit organization, then it must be either a statewide, national, or international organization, or a local community-based organization with a membership of at least 500 individuals or businesses." Then moving on to the third clause, this-
I think, just why not have it be private, comma, or nonprofit, that it can be a private organization? Because there may be, for example, an endowment or a trust fund of someone who isn't a nonprofit, but they have the funds to do it, so.
Well, I'd just read the first bullet point. Conservation organization, and it must be-
Yeah, it's already, or private nonprofit.
Be a public conservation agency or a private nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization.
So we've really already addressed that.
I think there's a reason, yeah, I think there's a reason why they did it that way, you know? I mean, they didn't put down for-profit corporations in there, so I think, I think if you try to put profit in the second one, you're going to be inconsistent with the first. with the first.
Right. So we'll just leave it as private nonprofit organization in the second clause?
And if somebody comes along that, for some of this unusual thing, I guess we could change that, but I would stick with that first bullet point.
Well, we can always.
Changes. Yeah, we could amend this.
Or if it comes in under a special appeal to the board. Or would we have to remember the entire thing? I just, I don't know, private, I mean, because even endowment funds are, are they considered private, under what we consider the declaration of privacy?
They are private and nonprofit, as in the first bullet point. The one issue that I think that could conceivably arise, but seems unlikely, there are other subdivisions of the Internal Revenue Code, Section 501, that have nonprofit characteristics. It's conceivable there might be some other entity that qualifies under a different subdivision of Section 501, but that would be very rare.
Yeah. Very rare. Well, that's because we don't bother much.
We're a nonprofit. We're a nonprofit. Huh? Yeah?
So with that second clause, we will stick with the language, "If it is a private nonprofit organization, then," and it goes forward with that language. Okay, the third requirement is that it have owned or managed at least 50 acres of natural resource open space for at least one year. And this is the modification that was made by the Planning Commission, or be able to provide financial surety to ensure stewardship. We have some relatively new, young conservation organizations in the county, and rather than write them out of this process, we added this extra clause. If they were able to provide the financial surety to ensure the stewardship, that they would also be able to acquire a conservation parcel and qualify as a conservation organization. And last but not least, have the institutional and economic ability to maintain the property. So those are the provisions that a conservation organization has to meet. Then the third definition is of a non-conservation parcel. That's the piece that's left over after you have transferred the other one to the conservation organization. As you remember, I pointed out that the non-conservation parcel also may be below the minimum lot area requirements, so we wanted to put a few safeguards in in that case. That if it's nonconforming as to size, it would be a legal, nonconforming lot. That it must be of a size and shape to be suitable for the uses permitted by its zoning classification. And if it's designated agriculture, it must be at least 10 acres in area. That's the minimum lot size for an Irrigated Land Conservation Act contract. And so we're just trying to ensure that we don't get some little tiny miniscule piece left over that's not suitable for anything, and those are the reasons for trying to put these safeguards in. Then moving on from the definitions, before approving a parcel map waiver conservation subdivision, it has to meet these conditions. The recordation of the parcel map waiver conservation subdivision has to occur within one year, together with the transferal of the conservation parcel to the conservation organization. There has to be a deed restriction recorded against the conservation parcel that specifies what the permitted and prohibited uses are. There has to be an easement or a deed restriction recorded in favor of the county to ensure the use for conservation purposes in perpetuity. And then the provision that if they fail to record within one year, the subdivision is voided unless the planning director grants an extension. So that's our control to make sure that this actually occurs.
Chair, I have a quick question.
Yes.
And this may be stretching way far, but, you know, when you talk about a new organization that has acquired land but is only a year old, and they've managed this land, what would happen if, say, a nonprofit folded? And, you know, I mean, they've had property and sort of demonstrated that they're, you know, financially capable, but it folds, lack of donations, funding, whatever. What happens in that case? Do we have a provision for that?
That's the third requirement, an easement or deed restriction recorded in favor of the county. At that point, that control takes effect, and we have then the ability to make an assessment of what the situation is, perhaps try and arrange for transfer to another qualifying organization, or make a decision. I mean, I don't know what the decision would be, because it would obviously depend on the individual circumstances, but we do, with the easement or deed restriction recorded in our favor to ensure use for conservation purposes, then we do have control over that situation.
Is that true?
It gives some control with a private...
I mean, we could talk about this, but I'm turning to the attorney. Is that true?
If a private nonprofit ends up in bankruptcy, then the bankruptcy court has very broad powers to take action to approve transfers that you may not ultimately think are appropriate. But then, this gives you the greatest amount of control that you can have. You simply cannot overcome the powers of the federal government and the bankruptcy court.
No, I understand that. And I brought that up almost for everybody to be aware, that, you know, it sounds real simple, but to say that, you know, well, and to restrict it to, you know, these people who are saying, "Well, there's some new organizations in the county, and they might want." Well, you know, I'm a lot more comfortable with a national or international, or somebody who's, you know, controls 100 acres and has for 20 years, let alone five, because I don't want this to come back and bite the county. And, you know, if an organization folds, it's more or less out of our hands. I'm not voting against this. I don't want anybody to think I am, because I think the premise is correct. I just want us to be aware that perhaps we should be a little more restrictive on the definition of the organization. Now is not the time to do that, but we might watch this and see what starts to transpire, and then perhaps revisit. I don't see with the cost of land here that there's going to be a whole lot of any less-than-large organizations capable, but it's a caution in my mind. I'm always the one that looks at the possibilities.
If the conservation agency fails for whatever reason, the county then would become the entity that provides for the area that's in conservation.
Which could cost us money, and then maybe not. Maybe the conservation agency has the right to transfer under the bankruptcy to somebody else and not us.
Yes.
And if they do fail, and we have to maintain it, it's a cost to us, to the taxpayers. So those are just the little, probably would never happen, but just so it's on the record that it might.
May I ask a question that just popped in my mind about international entities? Do they have such terminology as private nonprofit? Do you know?
I'm sorry, I'm not an expert on that. I know that there are some agencies, conservation agencies, which have scope outside the United States. But obviously, they'd have to be chartered under our laws.
Yeah. They'd have to meet somehow that qualification, would they not? If they didn't have those particular words, private nonprofit, international agency. I just raise it as a question to think about.
I would think if they're going to operate in this country, they have to be chartered under our IRS laws.
Chris Stevens, Planning Division. Within the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, there is a standard clause that gives the planning director to make equivalency determinations and such. I think that would be an instance where we would look to use that mechanism.
Okay.
My turn?
Your turn.
If a nonprofit folds or something, the land use doesn't change. It's going to be a conservation area, and you can only use it for certain uses. So, and as far as maintenance are kind of issues if it falls on the county, I mean, fortunately, these are one of the few areas that don't require too much maintenance, for leaving the natural area as is.
If I might, somewhat speculative here, but I'll try and answer that. We have a number of projects that have come through where, as a condition of approval for, let's say, a 100-acre parcel for a particular development of a small area, they have been required to record a deed restriction to keep a portion of their property open. I would envision this operating in the same manner in that instance where it is a private entity. If they were to go bankrupt and the courts were to get involved, the county does not step in with a responsibility to care for the property. Where it lays is that there remains, though, a deed restriction on that portion of the property, which I believe is separate from the bankruptcy proceeding. But as kind of council mentioned, perhaps the courts in any given instance might have a separate and different opinion. But in general, would not be my expectation. The county would be responsible for stepping in and maintaining the property. It would simply remain with that deed restriction.
And that deed restriction does give it that extra layer of protection, so that's good. I do note that the state agencies don't have to abide by our land use, so we always want to keep that in the back of our mind if a state agency steps in, because they can do what they please, and they sometimes do. I have a couple of questions. In the report, it talks about the nature conservancy had, in the public comment portion, had a couple of comments, and it says that one that we incorporated and one we did not. I don't have the nature conservancy letter here. Can you tell us the one that was not incorporated? Do you recall?
I'm sorry, the nature conservancy sent an email to us saying that they, just with some minor language changes, basically referring to small structures rather than structures. I'm sorry, could you repeat your question one more time?
It's on page nine. It says that the nature conservancy, they put, email comments were received. The first comment was incorporated into the recommendation while the second was not. So I wasn't seeing what the second one was. That was not incorporated.
Okay. What we had done is we had limited permitted actions on conservation parcels, and the language we had started out with was, "uses such as hiking trails and trailhead parking lots, and small associated structures such as trailhead restrooms and information kiosks and signboards." And I think we just revised that whole section so that it became kind of a moot point. So their change had been, instead of saying "and structures," it was "and small associated structures."
Okay. Thank you for that. And then another one, which it may not be, it already may be taken care of, but we're also making an amendment to the noncoastal zoning. It's a cleanup one, and it refers to affordable elderly housing as an exemption, as well as cultural heritage. And the question that I have on that is, we refer to it as affordable slash elderly in association with Article, I guess it was three or something?
16.
16. So the question I have is, instead of calling it affordable, if we can call it lower income, or that's already being defined in Article 16, which I don't have?
That clause we brought in wholesale from the general plan, because that exception already existed in the general plan list of exceptions. Again, we're trying to bring...
All right.
And, yeah, I believe that the wording there is coordinated with the wording in Article 16 of the zoning ordinance.
And we hope that it does refer to lower, not necessarily moderate income as affordable, but I know that's a separate topic. And I can understand the basis for the cleanup. If you'd like to just get back to me on that, that's fine. I would be interested to know if we're making exemptions.
Yeah, there's actually special definitions for what constitutes an affordable unit for the purposes of Article 16, so it might be a little problematical to change it from affordable to low income. Because that's a defined term.
Okay. I just was wondering if we're making exemptions for moderate, and that would be up to 100...
An affordable unit is a for-sale or rental unit built under the provisions of this article for very low or lower-income households.
Great. Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then a final comment, which is a little, yes, it's a little outside of the box. I've been going there lately. Regarding the use of this for conservation areas, and I'm also looking at an initiative to allow for buffer zones for agriculture. If these areas might be able to be used in terms of providing some buffers from agriculture when a new development moves in right next to agricultural land, and they need to set aside a couple hundred feet for, as a buffer, or 300 feet for a buffer, if that buffer area might be also a separate lot?
You know, I would imagine that would depend on whether it qualifies as a conservation parcel in terms of having significant biological resources, and whether it would be desirable to a conservation organization to acquire. Certainly, I think they would provide buffers between agriculture and the river, and I think that's a key issue that we're dealing with here, is that, you know, they would provide a buffer between maybe some of the things that might migrate from an agricultural operation into the river.
Right. And it's the same principle, you know, to have that buffer to protect nature or to protect people from pesticide drifts. I guess, you know, as we put a cultural heritage and affordable housing as exemptions for this lot size, if we move forward with establishing more stronger buffer zones for agriculture, that we could also have that kind of exemption if that lot land is to be set aside, maybe in a different ownership.
Yeah.
We'll look at that in the future.
Look at that, yes.
Thank you very much.
One more question.
One more question.
Just a quick one, and since the chief is here. What are the implications to the fire district of, you know, and it's certainly not going to be wholesale, but, you know, I remember a lot of discussion about, you know, conservancy land, open-spaced lands, et cetera, what happens in a wildfire, and who controls, et cetera. Could you give us a quick, for the public and the record, since we're a fire hazard area?
Okay. Thank you. Bob Roper, Fire Chief, Fire Protection District. I put in a speaker card, because I was sitting in the audience, I wasn't aware of this topic. And I do have a concern. I'm not taking position to support...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you had a speaker card in. I just saw you sitting back there.
I can address it either way.
No, no, please speak. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm not taking a position to support or oppose the recommendation before you, but it is a situation that I'd like your board to be aware of. Right now, what could happen here, from what I'm seeing, is we have people who own, say, river-bottom properties that abut residential neighborhoods. Currently, today, those people are part of our weed abatement program, where they have to remove the hazard from those homes to get the 100-foot of clearance. I could see that some of that property, why it's not useful to a property owner, they may give it to an open-space management agency. And my concern here is if that goes to an open-space management agency, if that agency does not have the financial wherewithals to maintain the clearance, or if it goes to a state agency, who I have limited authority over what requiring that clearance, then we begin to shift a large, a potential large-scale problem onto the populated areas of the county. And I'm not sure if that's addressed in this, but that is a potential that's out there. So as a recommendation, I would just, I don't know how we could do it, but I would just like to make sure that whoever takes over this somewhat, this parcel that may be considered worthless to one person, or to avoid the finances, the liability, and it goes to somebody else, whoever assumes it also assumes the hazard reduction responsibilities.
I was just going to ask, if Steph had any recommended ways to address this concern to the chief?
Well, my first comment would be that we are required, if you listed the list of findings that we're required to make, one of them is our standard, that this action is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. And where we, one of the things that we look at on any project proposal that comes through us are fire issues. We run everything through the fire district staff to look at, and one of the things, when we get projects of this ilk, they look at, are brush clearance. And when we get to the recordation of that easement, and we cite those uses and activities that are allowed, typically, brush clearance will be included within there. So we try and address it through the mechanisms that we have available to us. Similarly, on the agricultural side, where we have properties that are adjacent to agriculture, we will consult the Agricultural Commissioner's office to make sure that we're not doing anything that would be detrimental to those operations. We'll do that with fire as well, and try and address it on a case-by-case basis. I'm not seeing anything today where I could recommend specific language. I think we've done a pretty good job of dealing with that. It is a challenge, I know, for the conservation agencies. Brush clearance is not necessarily consistent with their goals, but that's the nature of the planning business. We've got a lot of competing goals, and we try and weigh them and balance them, and I think we continue to do so.
Question. Do we have any authority over the conservation agencies? I mean, if, my concern is, you know, they say, "Well, we can't clear this brush because it's habitat for the wiggly-squiggly guy." You know, do they then say, "No, we're not going to clear this," and now we've created a situation where we don't have the clearance, and we don't own the property or have the authority to make the clearance happen?
The, in that instance, if we did run into that case, the difficulty from us as a planning agency will be making that finding, that allowing them to acquire this under this mechanism... this mechanism and not clear that brush is not in conflict with our requirement to make this safe for the public and safe for the welfare. So that puts us in a, you know, it's hard to answer because you don't know the specific circumstances, but I think there would be a likelihood that we would be unable to make that finding, and therefore we could not approve the subdivision.
Right.
Okay. Well, I don't want to, I don't want to drag this out forever, but I have, you know, maybe a suggestion for the future, and maybe I can work with the chief and bring something forward for the board to kind of grapple with and say, "Yes, we want to look further at this." And that is this whole question of, you know, wildland and urban interface, because it's getting more and more complicated, and if there's going to be considerable amount of disparate parcels, maybe there won't be. But that people say are valuable habitat, but yet the next one's over here, and then there's the one over here, and what are we kind of creating in, in terms of this interface problem? So not to belabor this, I think the underlying concept is a good one. Now, you know, maybe it needs tweaked, but the underlying concept, we could probably move forward and, and then look at some other modifications later when we've had time to really think through it.
I have to say, this reminds me a little bit of somebody saying, "Oh, my gosh, what are we going to do if too many people show up at our fundraiser?" Bottom line is, I mean, if we have that many, you know, you said so many disparate parcels, I'll be delighted if we have a whole lot of, you know, a whole lot of organizations taking advantage of this. I'll be, I'll be surprised. I just think it's not very likely that we'll have, have lots and lots.
It depends on our lifetime, but if this ordinance in this county are here forever...
Sure. Yeah. I mean, it's legitimate to pay attention to. I just want to point out, it'll be a pleasant problem. It's a problem, but it's a pleasant problem. Right?
I know. We always have people show up at our...
Chief Roper, did you have anything else to add there?
Just one last comment. The Fire District would be in favor, as long as, if I understand this right, if somebody comes to RMA with a subdivision, it would go through a process, and at that time, we would have input on who's assuming it, and how would this be taken care of.
Right.
I'm in favor of addressing it at that time.
And that it meets these findings.
And if I may, in the Keneo Valley Thousand Oaks, they had all, in, when they did their general plan, thought that the open space that was there would all be privately owned, and through the development of COSCA, which is a JPA with the park district in the city, they've actually been making this land public through that organization. And oftentimes, when developers give their land to COSCA, they do arrange for funding for brush clearance for maintenance in the future. So that, that might be something we'll look at in terms of conditions. Also, there's the other flip side to this, too, which is, and as we go forward, this is going to allow for a development of smaller parcels than normal, and so that we can set aside the open space area. And just from experience, sometimes we have situations where structures are allowed near the edge of those developable parcels that then require brush clearance. So you put something within 50 feet of a stream bed, all of a sudden, that stream bed that you wanted to protect has to be cleared to brush, and you don't have the benefit of, for the wildlife. So I would just keep that in mind so we don't end up diluting the impact of this. Thank you.
More to your comments? Are you finished?
Just a few more things.
Okay, please, go ahead.
I just wanted to make one comment on the conditions. Those are the, the conditions of approval that we require, but there's also a specific statement that we have the ability to add additional conditions, which I think would address the issue of brush clearance and so forth. And then Chris has already alluded to the findings that we have to make. Before the decision maker can approve the conservation subdivision, one parcel has to qualify as a conservation parcel. The requirements for a nonconforming, nonconservation parcel are met. We went over those with the definition. Again, Chris has pointed out that we have to find that the granting of the conservation subdivision is not detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare, or to the use, enjoyment, or valuation of neighboring properties. That's where that issue would be addressed. And that the conservation parcel map has to be compatible with good zoning practice. So on a case by case basis, we would be addressing these issues. There's just two more tiny little things that we cleared up. This is a procedural issue. The language is being revised to require that conservation and nonconservation parcels are numbered parcels rather than lettered parcels. And again, we're bringing the lot area requirements into conformance, so we're revising the lot area requirements in the subdivision ordinance, simply to refer to the exceptions to lot area requirements that are in the general plan and the coastal, noncoastal zoning ordinance, so that they're all together referring to the same sets of exceptions to the lot area. And with that, we would recommend that your board adopt these revisions to the general plan, the noncoastal zoning ordinance with, and the subdivision ordinance with that one change that we did discuss with regard to changing the definition of the conservation organization. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Mr. Johnson, you're up.
I apologize for weighing in so late in this, but listening to all the conversation, the one answer I didn't hear, and I didn't, I admit I haven't thoroughly gone through this. If a parcel goes into this conservation, say, the Land Conservancy in Ojai, and for whatever reasons in the future, they discease to exist, even with, what is the reversionary rights and responsibilities on this? Because weed abatement, you know, the chief's being sort of gentle about it, but it is an expensive proposition. If you get a lot of acreage, we have that responsibility at the Honor Farm, and it can multiply. So is there, what is the, is there a safeguard or some provision for how that will be taken care of? Because if you, if the economic value of the property is changed by putting it into basically public ownership, it will be a public responsibility.
Mr. Johnson, members of the board, the, the question is simply one of who ends up with the property. Ownership will end up with somebody, whether it be another private nonprofit, a public entity, or a private individual. And the deed restriction will still be on the property, we presume, although with regard to that discussion earlier, it is conceivable that there may be an effect on that deed restriction by actions of a bankruptcy court. The bottom line is, whoever it is that ends up in ownership of that property will have the same obligations as the previous owner had.
Right. I guess the question that I'm driving at is, for example, take cemetery districts. They always start out, you know, with a lot of ribbon cutting and fanfare, and then a hundred years later, everybody's trying to figure out who else will take care of the cemetery. Right. Well, everybody cemetery district ultimately, unless there is some kind of economic or, you know, revenue stream. I guess I'm coming at this or bringing this up because of my experience in the parks. These things become sacred ground at some point, and without a, a private motivation, whether it be nonprofit or for profit, it becomes a public responsibility usually, or it doesn't get done.
If this is a public entity that has ownership of the property, and the public entity folds, then almost certainly, if the property is not sold off to a private entity, and that would be an unlikely circumstance, I would suppose, then another public entity will have to take ownership. You alluded to cemetery districts. There's a provision in the government code that provides for what happens when a cemetery district folds, or when other public entities fold for one reason or another. But ultimately, the property ownership will pass, if it's a private nonprofit entity, presumably to another private entity of some kind. No public entity would have to take over that property that's held by a private nonprofit entity if it didn't want to. It wouldn't be obligated to do so. Politically, there may be a desire to have it take it over.
Any further questions? I have some public speaking request cards. Were you finished with the presentation?
Yeah, I finished my presentation.
Okay.
If you have any questions.
Question.
On page two of four, on exemptions like agricultural water well sites, do you see any issue there with the last sentence? Such wells shall be for agricultural purposes only.
That was essentially the original language. We're just, we're bringing that exception in from the zoning ordinance into the general plan. And actually, let me just, it was phrased slightly differently in its original. We're looking at page one of Exhibit 3A. Is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking at Exhibit 4B.
Oh, sorry. The language is repeated in different...
Page two of four. Such wells shall, I, did you talk with the groundwater management agency at all about that?
Okay. We're looking then at the middle of page two of Exhibit 4B.
Yeah.
A water well or, a water well site or sites, each no more than 1,200 square feet, may be created on a lot for the sole purpose of transferring by lease or operation, by lease or sale. Possession of the well and so much of the land around the well as may be necessary for its operation. Such wells shall be for agricultural purposes only. That was the wording, as you see, the title is agricultural water well sites. That was the wording that was in existence before.
I understand.
And the exemption is only intended to be for agricultural water wells.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. We'll move to, thank you. Thank you. We'll move to our public comment request cards. Chief Roper, had you completed what you, okay. John Bromsonley. Good morning.
Chairman, welcome along. Members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Johnston. I'm John Braesemley. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. And the amendments you're considering now are of immense importance to us. I want to commend you for taking them under consideration. If you proceed then to adopt them, it will certainly make our task of preserving open space in the Ojai Valley easier in perpetuity. I might add as a coda to this, that one of the processes we go through when acquiring land is to make sure the land, that each parcel of land has a trust fund attached to it to maintain it for the long haul. Again, my thanks, and our organization's thanks for your taking this under consideration, and we certainly hope that you support it.
Thank you for your comments. EJ Remson.
Good morning. I'm EJ Remson with the Nature Conservancy. I won't take any more of your time. I just commend that Planning Department is doing an excellent job as usual. This is a tool that will be very helpful to us in the future. To answer Supervisor Flynn's question, Nature Conservancy is an international organization, but we are incorporated in the United States as a 501(c)(3). I assume that's the case for most conservation organizations like us. Furthermore, we've had a chance to meet with Chief Roper on the issue of brush clearance in the past. I hope we'll have the opportunity to continue to do that, but the bottom line is that we often have to clear brush. It's painful and expensive for us to do it, but it is a law, and we're subject to the law, so there's no exemption for us. So thank you very much.
Can I ask you just, just a quick question? In terms of that, and I, maybe you can just, instead of answering me here, if it's a long answer, you can get ahold of me at my office. What, how do you resolve the issue between the mission and the law in this brush clearance issue? Because it is a concern to me. I mean, you know, my district, first one half burned, and then the other half burned conveniently, so now I guess I don't have to worry about it for 15 or 50 years. But it is a concern, and, and I would feel a lot more comfortable if somebody could say, "No, when it comes to safety, that goes first." And I'm not sure that's where everybody is.
Well, the law is the law, and we have to comply with the law. In the future, I'd love to talk about it if those are going to be expanded, the clearance areas that they occur on the development property, not on the conservation property.
Yeah, but if it's ag land, we don't want that either.
That, that's true, but bottom line is, we're, we're subject, we're subject to the law.
Okay. You and I will talk one of these days. I'll give you a call. I've got your card.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you. Appreciate your comments, and just an aside, appreciate the work we're doing on the Santa Clara Airport issue, EJ. Thank you. Okay, that's the end of the public comments. It's back to the boards. Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is not the sexiest issue, as you can tell by the fairly dry questions and details and stuff, but this really is a good government project, and it's been great staff work. And when you look at all of the nuances that you paid attention to to bring this back, this is, this certainly is consistent with where the citizens of Ventura County are. It helps facilitate something that everybody wants to do. So I'd be delighted to make the motion that we accept staff's recommendations.
I'll second. And just a quick comment. You know, Steve and I don't always agree, but I think you're right on this one. It is the way that it should be done to, to accomplish both means, and that is to let the private property owner, the rancher, whomever, accomplish their needs and still provide for the wants and desires of the public and the conservation organization. And so I appreciate what staff has done here, and I greatly appreciate the fact that it looks like this is going to be supported because it's the type of thing that if people aren't innovative and get a little too worried, might not be supported because you're going to end up with legal nonconforming lots and that. And I've seen that run people off before. So it looks like you've done your work well.
Motion of the second. Further comments?
I would like to also thank the Santa Clara River Trustee Council for providing a $97,000 grant to process this. I know that, that helped move this along, and I appreciate that. And I see this as a really good planning move in terms of, instead of allowing for projects that could go through all the acreage, it will be more concentrated and allow and encourage this benefit to the environment. So I think it's a real win. Thank you for your work.
Okay. Motion of the second and objection to the motion. Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you for the good work. Unanimous support. Thank you. I know it's a lot of work behind the scenes on this. All right. Board members, we'll move ahead to our 11 o'clock time certain item, and it's a repeal of ordinance regarding our tobacco settlement allocation plan oversight committee. And good morning, Ms. Camacho.
Good morning. I'm Norma Camacho at the County Executive Office, and I'm here today to present the recommendations to enact new provisions of our ordinances which govern our tobacco settlement program. I just do want to make sure that everybody has received replacement pages for page one of the ordinance first, first of all.
We did.
Okay. And again, these changes are made primarily to streamline the tobacco settlement allocation process. One of the major changes we are making is, rather than requiring the plan update be done annually, is to have the plan update be done every five years. And this plan update generally incorporates the changes, the priorities in which the program is concentrating on that particular year. These changes will also require that all of the bylaws for both committees be changed to be consistent with the ordinance, and that is indicated in recommendation number two. In the interim, in order for the committee to continue its work at this point in time, we are recommending that the seating of the chair of the allocation committee take place, and the appointment of a new vice chair is made as provided in recommendation number three. I'd just like to know if you have any questions or comments regarding the changes in the ordinances? I'll be happy to answer any questions right now you may have.
Questions?
I recall reading, maybe it was on our consent calendar of, never mind. I think that was first five.
Excuse me.
Questions of staff at this time? I don't have any public cards on this item.
Move the item. Second.
Motion of the second and objection to the item. Hearing none, so ordered.
Yeah, we will also have a second reading.
Yes, we will have a second reading on that December 13th. This is the first reading. Thank you.
Title of the ordinance, an ordinance to the Board of Supervisors of the County of Ventura to repeal ordinance numbers 4218, 4229, 4231, 423, pardon me, 4257, and 4261 to the County of Ventura's rolling five-year strategic tobacco settlement allocation plan, and to reenact the County of Ventura's strategic tobacco settlement allocation plan.
Thank you. And again, the second reading will be December 13th at 9:30 time certain. Okay, and that moved ahead. So, no, we're actually ahead of schedule, so let's go back to our regular agenda and finish some things up before our 11:30 time certain. And I believe I marked it. Here I am. We are on item number, thank you, 41. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. The Oak Park MAC of one of the members particularly... The Oak Park MAC of one of the members, particularly Dina Perry, had proposed the idea of bringing the volunteers and policing that is in Thousand Oaks, see if we can get a program like that in Oak Park. The volunteer and policing or VIP program in Thousand Oaks is highly successful. And what it does is that people volunteer, and they become trained, and the services they provide, such as house checks, vacation house checks, being able to issue citations for parking enforcement, report writing, and others, frees up our sworn personnel so that they can concentrate on the higher level of police services, and it really is a more efficient use of our police officers, too. So it's a really good program. This one has been in place for a little over a decade. Members of the volunteers and policing include residents of Oak Park, who would love to be able to have it in their area also, I'm sure. I would like to ask that the board at this time allow for discussions to take place with the city of Thousand Oaks regarding what would be contracting with the city to provide the volunteer and policing services to Oak Park. The community service area number four, which is the Oak Park area, has the funds available and are authorized to use them for police services, and we're looking at up to $30,000 annually. In addition, it would require, obviously, working with the city of Thousand Oaks. I know some council members want to make sure that there won't be any depletion in services, but I think overall, this would be a benefit to public safety in that whole region because an officer's an officer whether they're over in Oak Park or they're in Thousand Oaks. Unfortunately, they're right adjacent to each other so that if a VIP needs to get backed up, you know, they will have that ability. Right now, I'm just asking that we do allow for the conversations to take place, look and see if the city is interested in contracting for services, and wanted to make sure that that would be okay with the board before we move forward any farther on this.
Yes. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I like this process, particularly coming forward conceptually, you know, and getting the board's conceptual approval. My request or my question is, when this comes back then, can it come back through sort of the staff so that we get the staff's evaluation, particularly on the standard, you know, doing the standard fiscal impact and that kind of stuff? Does that make sense to you, and is that what you intend?
If you'd like, this has, you know, I have... It has been put together in coordination with our staff, but I'd be happy to have them bring it back instead of me if we ever do get to that point because the city of Thousand Oaks may not be willing to go forward.
Or in conjunction, just so it has the standard fiscal stuff and staff's taking a look at it. I mean, the first time it comes, I think it's very appropriate for it to come straight from the supervisor. I just would want to make sure that they... They can't, kind of can't weigh in right now when it's in this form, and I just want to make sure they get a chance to weigh in.
And just finally, it's such a nice program, and the idea of combining our officers with our volunteers is, I think, a really good strategy for increasing public safety in our area, and I think that would be a model for other areas, too. So I'm excited and I hope that it can get approved at the city council level and at the board level if the city council approves it. Thank you.
My compliments, yes. It's great.
There are questions? Comments? Mr. Johnston?
Just a comment. Supervisor Parks has been working on this for some time and has talked to our office, but this has been a rather unusual circumstance as far as the relationship because the sheriff is involved, who is a county official, and we contract with the city, and then the city is involved because they have a program and a training program. This happens to be a service district who is asking the county whether or not they might contract for a service that's really provided by the city. City hasn't taken a position one way or the other, either for, you know, or against it. But the question was, you know, kind of who steps forward first and asks something? So Supervisor determined that she would go conceptual first, just to get the conversation started and see if it goes anywhere. Is that pretty much kind of...
Yeah, exactly. It would be nice if our sheriff's department, if we had enough funds, that we could do our own programs and train volunteers and put them out here, but fortunately, the city of Thousand Oaks has got that program in place, so this would be the most efficient use of resources.
Okay.
So move the recommendation.
Motion of a second and objection. Hearing none, so ordered. Good. And good luck. Item forty-two. Item forty-two is a letter that I've carried forward for the board to ask that you support a letter going to our United States Senate and our House of Representatives, the Conferies Group that will be doing budget reconciliation, specific to the cuts that are being proposed for child support enforcement. And this is needed to come forward because they'll be going into those Conferie sessions soon. The fiscal impact, as you can see, is, could be a potential loss of $17 million over five years, and we know at the local level how important it is for us to continue to support what I think we have here in our county anyway, a very effective child support program, and one that is, for every dollar spent gets us $2.88 in return in the way of child support going to families and to children and where it should go. I think the letter's pretty safe forward. I don't need to spend much more time on it unless you have questions that I hope I can answer.
The $17 million is just our county hit due to the cuts.
Correct. Over five years, yeah.
Yeah. It's pretty extreme.
So this is asking that we move a letter to our representatives that points out the impact to us and the importance of supporting our program and financially supporting and not taking those drastic cuts. I see Mr. Trauma's here. If he wished to add anything to it, it's pretty straightforward. I appreciate bringing it to us. Questions? I'd like to make the motion to support the letter.
Second.
Motion of a second and objection. Hearing none, so ordered. We'll get the letter out. Thank you. Item forty-three. Report of use of emergency contract authority. Mr. Pratt.
Good morning, Chair Long, board members, Mr. Johnston. For record, my name's Jeff Pratt, I'm with the Watership Protection District. This item is a request to continue use of your emergency contract authority. We currently have two projects we're reporting on. Santa Paul Airport within the city of Santa Paul on the Santa Clara River, which you're by now intimately familiar with, and the Ventura River Bank Protection Project, which is recently started just above the Santa Ana Bridge, protecting a very steep slope from further erosion. Both of those projects are currently underway, and they're continuing at a pace, and we're staying on the contractors. We request your board to continue use of this authority because we want to get this project, these, both of these projects done as soon as possible, and we put forth our recommendation as put in the board letter, and I can answer any question I have.
Questions?
Move the recommended action.
Keep up the good work.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Don't give in. A motion of a second and objection. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the tenacity. Item forty-four. Regular meeting, appointment of chair and vice chair, public financing authority. Mr. Dursey, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you. Board members, this is acting as the Board of Directors of the Joint Powers Authority, requesting that you convene your annual meeting and appoint the chair and the vice chair of the Board of Directors to coincide with the chair and the vice chair of the Board of Supervisors. I'm here available to answer any questions if you have any.
Move the recommended action. There is a motion of a second. Any objection?
Just clarification. This is to appoint the chair and vice chair of the finance authority?
The public, yeah. Well, the public finance authority, yes, correct.
Right. Okay. I wasn't sure. Coincide is one thing, but to actually appoint so that they're the same ones as the chair and vice chair of the board is, I understand?
That's correct. It's to coincide at the same time when it changes, and if and when it changes in January, then the chair and the vice chair of the public finance authority will change also.
And we'll just kind of do that in perpetuity or...
Well, yeah. We would do that in perpetuity, except we have to have an annual meeting, so we just do it in conjunction with the annual meeting.
But the chair and the vice chair, that will be the policy?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further questions? Was there... There was a motion? And a second. Motion and a second. Any objection? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. That, again, we were sitting as the Ventura County Public Financing Authority on that one. Now we're back to the Board of Supervisors. Item forty-five.
Move to receive and file.
Second. Motion to receive and file. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered. So, we now have some time before our 11:30 and our 12 o'clock. What would you wish to do, board? Take a break.
We do have two speakers here for our 11:30.
Right.
So I just would encourage us to make sure we do start right at 11:30. I know it's frustrating, but once we make it a time certain 11:30, we're not allowed to start early, even if we're...
That's correct. Okay. We'll take a break. We've got closed session items. Is there anything that could be handled?
Well, there's one item that would take about 10 minutes, but you run the risk of actually going over, as pointed out by Supervisor Bennett.
Let's just take a break. And then we'll go, we'll finish, do the 11:30 and be back for the 12 o'clock and get the work done. Thank you.
That makes sense. More sense, because we always end up going over.
All right. Good morning, and thank you for attending today. It's 11:30 time certain item. I am bringing to the board for consideration regarding the proposal for an ordinance for model social host liability ordinance. And I'd like to just give some brief introductory remarks and then turn it over to the real experts who've been working on this, all of you out there. To say that there, the board has been, in addition to the board letter, provided the Ventura County Limits document that gives a lot of the background on how we got here today on the significant piece of this. But in addition to that, there was a book, Five Years of Prevention in Ventura County, The Prevention File, that talks about the history of strategic planning for our county that's come from the Department of Alcohol and Drugs since 1996. And part of that significant piece is what we have before us today is to really look at our environment as one of the solutions and tools for us in dealing with alcohol and drug substance abuse issues in our county. In looking at that environment and looking at how things impact our community, obviously, we're all familiar with public safety issues that come as a result of alcohol and drug substance abuse in the adult arena, but also in the juvenile arena. And in looking at this piece before us today, looking at the place of last drink and trying to identify in surveys that were done by, through the Alcohol and Drug Prevention Division in contract services to do surveys that tried to identify those arrested for driving under the influence and their place of last drink. And some of the startling results that they uncovered with that survey, which the significant piece that is being proposed today is that that occurs in what is called the host home, the host environment. Surprising, I think, to some of us, at least I've heard this out in the communities, I've talked already to a couple of folks about bringing this forward and using what would be a civil tool to address underage drinking and underage binge drinking that's occurring in homes. You look at the percentages in the letter that talks about the private home as a setting, as a place of last drink, the younger offenders, 78.3% of 18-year-olds, 72.9% of 19-year-olds. The issue is the law in the sense that there are significant and sufficient laws to deal with alcohol abuse that occurs in a public arena, but there isn't in the private arena. There's a true gap, and that is now in consideration with this letter and for a proposed ordinance would be to, again, give a tool that would help to impact that gap. And impact in the sense of going to, you know, the pocketbook of the host home that has, for a variety of reasons, whether it's they look the other way, or in some cases, as the report has shown, where adults consider it is a rite of passage that teenagers should have their first drink in their home, or in some cases, many more than just one drink. And the statistics that have been in the reports that talk about repeated public safety response to those homes, where they'll get two and three and four and five calls for one home because of the party that's going on. And if they don't get access into that home, and legally cannot just force a way of access unless they feel there's obviously some other criminal law intent being broken, then you have what's occurring behind closed doors, which is the underage drinking. And then the underage drinking, drinker gets out into the community, finding their way home, and there are many issues that then result from that, tragic stories that result from that. So, in reading this information and talking with the team leaders, I was very impressed with the work they've done, substantial work in documenting and looking at the issues countywide and saying, we need to take some steps that will bring this home to us as a community to say we cannot, nor should we ever, look the other way. Just as we are working to help our, help the youth in our county and many other social aspects, this is another one that says it's not okay. And to adults and parents who feel this rite of passage, that's not okay. And everything in moderation and everything with responsibility, but we know that there are, obviously, from the workload that the public safety responds to, that it isn't always in moderation or with responsibility. So, the letter that is proposed is to hear the report from the good people who've been working on this and who are here this morning, and prove that there be wider dissemination of this, these studies and reports, and get them out to all of the cities. And pleased to see that we have Ojai here with us to talk about the Ojai implementing steps. And then to ask our CEO and Sheriff's Department and Behavioral Health and County Council to take a look at the proposed ordinance and review further, taking comments from the board members, and see if we can bring something back to this board within 90 days that will, I would hope, set the bar for our county unincorporated area, joining in with Ojai to have a model social host liability ordinance. So, that's my opening comments. I'd like to introduce Kathy Staples and Jeff Dean, who are going to carry forward the good work of the many people who are sitting in the audience, and I appreciate, appreciate you being here and the good work. And please.
Thank you very much. I'm Kathy Staples from Ventura County Behavioral Health Department, and I'd like to thank the board and staff for this opportunity to talk about this important issue. Binge and underage drinking create significant health and safety risks in our community.
Kathy, would you pull your mic down a little bit?
Sure.
Take, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There. Thank you.
Sure. And we needed a tool to combat some of the most common and costly problems. One of those, as Supervisor Long has talked about, that our data has really shown that the place in which most commonly young people drink and binge drink are home parties. That was shown as a result of the information that we gathered from young people, underage drinkers who were arrested for drinking and driving, and from focus groups we've done, and from a telephone survey that happened, there was just also a community college survey of 1,600 community college students, the majority of whom were underage, who talked about the place in which they drank are home parties. And I think really, home parties are very different than some of us remember. The example I always use is being in the basement with a record player and maybe one beer that six kids split. Home parties in our county and other counties really tend to be very large events, particularly with the advent of cell phones and websites sort of dedicated to this information. There are some people in the audience that have some personal experience with that. So, home parties may be 200, 300, 400 people, and often result in violence and other risks to not only the partygoers, but to our community. So, Ventura County Behavioral Health, for about the past 10 years, has been funding community coalitions. And as they really began to recognize what a significant issue, home parties, where they wanted some legal advice about what were some things that could be done to address these. So, we began talking to the Center for the Study of Law and Enforcement Policy, which is an arm of the Pacific Institute for Research and Evaluation, which is really a nationally-wide recognized expert on alcohol policy. And they began kind of formulating some things from this. And quickly, it became obvious that what we really needed was a legal document, that would be a model social host liability ordinance document that could respond to the diverse needs of communities, and that cities could really tailor a social host liability ordinance to meet their community needs. So, the vast majorities in the city of this county are interested in this and have asked. The city of Ojai has already had a study group on that and are prepared to do their first reading. The city of Fillmore is poised to further investigate a social host ordinance and adopt one. So, we, we wanted something, an ordinance that could help to effectively deal with deterring loud, unruly, and dangerous parties in private settings. As Supervisor Long said, the research that Pire and the Center for Law, the Study of Law and Enforcement Policy, determined that civil consequences were really the way to go, and that would present options for imposing fees and recovering costs associated with law enforcement, fire, or other emergency response services. So, that's really the reason why we had this document created. In February, Ventura County Behavioral Health received a grant, were one of 11 counties that successfully received a grant to address underage and binge drinking among the 15 to 25-year, excuse me, 15 to 25-year-old population in this county. And as we began gathering data from community college students, from people who were arrested from drinking and drivers, doing focus groups with young people, a telephone survey that surveyed 3,000 Ventura County residents, people were concerned about the issues of young people and drinking, and we find through every source of data that we collected that home parties were a significant problem. So, that's, that's sort of the background of why we created this. We have many cities that are poised and interested in adopting a model social host. I'd like to introduce Chief Deputy Jeff Dean now. The Sheriff's Department has been a major partner for behavioral health, alcohol and other drug prevention in this effort. They see this as a priority and have joined with us in that. A number of us, including three very high-ranking Sheriff's Department officers, went to the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Conference in Tucson to further study what would be some, it's a conference that's on enforcement of underage drinking. And a team from Ventura County went, seven of us went, to really study strategies that would be effective. You know, this, this really could not be successful without the leadership and the commitment that the Sheriff's Department and Chief Deputy Jeff Dean have shown, and it's been significant. So, I'd like him to make a few comments.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Mr. Johnson. I'd like to take credit for a lot of it. I drove about six months ago really getting involved in this. One of my captains, Captain Gary Pennas, who was up in the Ojai contract, is now in Thousand Oaks, has been involved for years. Kathy asked if we wanted to go to Tucson in July when it was 115, and we said, oh, yeah, party, let's go, great opportunity. It was an outstanding conference. It has been wonderful working with Kathy Staples. Team player, no personal agenda, whatever's best. It has just been a great, great relationship. She's calling all the time and pushing us forward, and it's wonderful to work with her. about these issues and see how we can work together, and especially how to push this social host ordinance. I guess I'm here today as a chief for the Sheriff's Department. I'm here as part of law enforcement collaborative, and I'm here as a parent of two teenagers who, knock on wood, today, I've been okay with, but I worry about them every single day. I have a 17-year-old daughter, and 70%, of all sexual assaults that happen on underage women and girls are results of alcohol. Either the victim's been drinking, or the suspect's been drinking. I oversee all sheriff's patrol functions, all our contracts, cities, all of them. So, I see all the reports. And rarely a week goes by where I don't see a rape case come in with an underage girl who either she had been drinking, or was at a party, where adults, proponents of the time, are the ones providing alcohol to these minors. And the minors ended up being the victim here. Ojai, under the direction of Mayor Hanstead, has just been an incredible leader in this issue. As Kathy mentioned, they passed the draft ordinance, and it's coming back for their first and their second reading. Their council was very, very supportive, very positive comments, and we appreciate what's happened of there. The majority of gang incidents happening throughout the county are alcohol-related. We don't have shootings, we don't have fights where we don't go forward and alcohol wasn't involved, that they hadn't been drinking. And the majority of the time, when we track that alcohol back, it's been provided by an adult. And unfortunately, the majority of that situation is in a home party situation. As cops and law enforcement, we've been pretty successful in dealing with minors alcohol, minors' access to alcohol from commercial establishment. We do stings, we send underage people in. And working closely with ABC, although they're short on resources, they've been very, very supportive, and we think we've got a handle on that. But we just don't have a handle on what's going on inside homes when adults are providing alcohol. And this, this is a tool that'll, that'll really, that'll really help us in that effort. I'm not naive to think, and I know none of you are naive to think, that one tool is going to stop it. But in my mind, if there's a tool available that is a disincentive for an adult, because they're afraid they may get a citation for $500 or $1,000, whatever it might be, if they provide alcohol to that minor, if that stops one young girl from being raped, somebody from being shot, or somebody from being hurt, in my mind, it's well worth the effort. I'm grateful for Supervisor Long for bringing this forward, and I hope, you know, I hope that all supervisors can find a way to support it. And I know if it goes forward, that we can work closely with County Council and have something back and ready to go in 90 days. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And those, some of the folks present in the audience?
I'd like to let you know. Can I remove?
Pull the whole thing down, Kathy. There you go.
I'd like to let you know some of who is present today. Ojai is represented. The mayor of Ojai, Ray Hanstead, is here. The Ojai Coalition is here. Captain Pentis, who is in charge of sexual assault and major crimes for the Sheriff's Department, and who's the former chief of police of Ojai, is here. Suze Montgomery, who is part of Ventura Prevention Alliance, is here. Sorry, I'm having a hard time doing this. Straight Up, which is a youth development project, is here with a number of parents and target-age teenagers and young adults. Cabrillo Economic is here, who has 20 apartment buildings throughout our county and are interested in home parties and the toll it causes on those residents and the parties. Project Safer, which is a project of Ventura County Behavioral Health Contract Project that looks at special events and the risk that are created. Who am I missing? I'm sorry, I might be missing somebody out there. There are two parents here, one from Oakview and one from Oak Park, who have both been the victims of home parties. One who returned home, you might be interested in her story, but returned home early and found 400 young people in her home, having a party, and major, major consequences. So, home parties are huge in this county. I remember the former chief of police of Oxnard telling me, when we were on a conference working on a big, we were on a planning group working on a big conference on club drugs, saying, as he thought back, he really couldn't think of one shooting in the city that wasn't somehow connected to a home party. I think the ramifications of underage home parties are enormous. And I am very pleased, Supervisor Long, that you brought this forward. And like Chief Deputy Jeff Dean, I too hope that we can have a ordinance that will apply to unincorporated areas. Because as many of the municipalities have said, nobody will know the boundaries better than young people, when you can go half a mile down the road and have a party with no consequences, as compared to the consequences that you'd have in a city. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Well, one of the challenges, if this occurs countywide, will be to get the message out to the adults, to the parents.
Oh, absolutely.
To let them know there is now a civil fine.
Absolutely. Part of the joint plan of the Sheriff's Department and Behavioral Health and the partners that are sitting behind us is to have a large media campaign. We want it to be that every young person and every adult in this county knows that such a thing exists. So, we, we look forward to your permission to disseminate this report and to have a countywide ordinance. And we're also very interested in getting the word out. Thank you.
I have a speaking card. Are there questions at this time from the board members? And if there are other speakers who wish to submit a card?
Not a question, but we talked about this being in the unincorporated area in the city of Ojai, and you talked about the challenge. The other challenge will be to see how many other cities will be interested in this, so that there really are no boundaries in Ventura County. So, I think that all of us that support this will be encouraging the cities in our districts to move forward with this. And I, I just want to acknowledge, I don't know whether Mayor Hanstead is going to speak or not.
Yes.
I gotta, okay. The leadership of Mayor Hanstead and the Ojai City Council, along with Chief Pentis and the group there, kind of an interesting thing is talking with the parents, but 60% of the parents in Nordoff High School and Matilla Junior High have already signed pledges on this issue and stuff. So, you're doing a great job of being pathfinders, like Ojai has been on many other issues here in Ventura County. So, congratulations.
Good question. A question. And I don't know who's going to answer it, but in this model ordinance, is there anything that holds the youth accountable?
The design is to fill a gap, and what is out is holding the adults accountable. I can tell you, in Sheriff's jurisdictions, I've changed the policy in the past six months, said anytime we have contact with any kids, used to be, we'd go to a large party with 300 kids, not that unusual. And we were so busy on calls, we'd just dump the beer out and go to the next call. Well, we don't do that anymore. You find a kid with beer, he either gets a citation, or it's documented and a parent is contacted within 24 hours. So, we have provisions now that allow us to deal with the kids. This is to fill a gap in dealing with the adults that are providing the alcohol.
I thought it was illegal to provide alcohol to a minor, period.
It is, but the burden of proof in proving a contributive delinquency of a minor case in a private home is virtually insurmountable. And the burden of proof on this is much less, and a civil fine seems to be, have the most success in places where this has been tried.
I'm not opposed. You know, don't get me wrong, I think that you need all tools. But it frustrates me greatly if there is not the same amount of pressure applied to the youth, and the same amount of consequence that they have to answer to. Because too many times, it's easy for a young person to make something happen and then walk away with, you know, well, gee, I was young, I didn't understand, you know, my parents now have a $50,000 finer, I've crashed a car, or God forbid, really gotten injured or injured someone else. And so, my concern is, I just don't want it to make it easy for the youth to escape responsibility on the same level that maybe the parent is going to face.
Absolutely not.
Or the adult, may not be a parent, most of the time it's probably not, but...
I think Kathy, the Energizer Bunny behind me, one of the next goals is we want to work with, and make sure we have a good relationship with the juvenile court, because with their workload and juvenile hall and everything else, sometimes it's tough and they get brushed aside. And I think the next step is to work to make sure we've got as much accountability as possible, given the resources we have, for the kids in addition to the adults.
Just real briefly, I think those, those issues, and I've had the pleasure for the last about a year and a half, been working with the city of Ojai with regards to this. Sort of, my commitment was, if the city of Ojai goes forward, and they're halfway there, they've done the draft, and now they haven't finalized, was that if they went forward, then I would push forward at the county level so that it would cover the whole Ojai Valley, as you talk about a place. And so, I just appreciate that Supervisor Long has brought it forward, even though the city of Ojai is not quite there in terms of doing it. But in those, in the hearings and in those meetings that you had, that issue came up a lot, you know, and even some, some people that were opponents of this. And I think the more you research this, and the more you, you find out about this, it, for some reason, that hits, I mean, parents are more concerned about that, and if, if parents are gone and negligently let their house be used for that party, and they get hit with that, that civil fine. And so, I think you're, you're asking the right questions and the same questions that have been asked in this. Civil fines, the research seems to be really showing it very effective.
Supervisor Long. Good morning. Dan Hicks, Behavioral Health. I'm the project administrator for Ventura County Limits, and have been intimately involved with the development of the document before you. I would like to point out that if it is the pleasure of the board to direct staff to pursue an ordinance, the Sheriff's Department, Behavioral Health, with others working with County Council, would certainly look closely into this issue. And I will say that there is a provision within the model ordinance for holding the host, that is, even if they are not a parent or an adult over the age of 21, accountable for hosting the party. These are matters to be worked out, but not insignificant matters. I just wanted to say that we can deal with that issue as well. And there are people here today who want to make sure that issue is dealt with.
Well, one of my comments or concerns, just as in reading this, my most, my biggest concern was the lack of accountability for the youth. I didn't see it there, and I understand you're trying to fill a gap. But the other thing is, you know, how do you define the host? If a parent is, you know, out of the country or out of the county and has done everything they can possibly do to encourage, instruct, threaten their child, that if you have a party when I'm gone, you know, you're dead meat, and it still happens because an older person, an adult, influences them to use that site, then who's responsible?
I quite understand.
So, I don't know how you're going to write that, but...
If you, if you'll take a look at the model ordinance, beginning on page eight, there are definitions which speak to this issue, which is not to say that it's resolved, but just to say that you have in your packet, yeah?
I'm sorry, you know, I can read a lot of words in the ordinance, but I'm not 100% comfortable with the words. I'm comfortable with the intent. And so, you know, I just, I want to bring these things out so that when all the work is being done, you'll know what, where my concerns are, and those are the two. You know, hold the real accountable person accountable, and if the parents are well-aware that their kids are drinking and they've opened the liquor cabinet up, then they darn well ought to be in trouble. But if they've done everything they can as good parents, and we all know our teenagers, I raised two boys, that was fun, they tend to sometimes go the other direction from where you want them to go. So, those are just my concerns to be voiced as this goes forward and people are working.
That I'm sure. I think the important thing here with this ordinance is it can be a preventive type of tool to use, needs a wide publicity. As a father of, my wife and I had six children, and they're all grown, I don't think they ever had any parties that I knew about. But I think it's, I think it's important that we try to look at this ordinance as something that we're working with parents together with, rather than just a punishment tool. It's to help parents, because being a parent today is much different than raising children than when I had my children really young. It was a lot easier then than it is today. So, this can be looked at as something helpful to parents. And if we can put it forth like that and prevent a lot of these things from happening, just because they're knowledgeable of them, I think that will be very good.
Education is certainly a key to it. I've got two speaker cards. I'd like to call up, if I might, at this time, Ray Hanstead, city of Ojai mayor. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisors and staff. I am the mayor of the city of Ojai. I'm a member of the SAFE Coalition, and I also have three sons aged 21 to, 18 to 23. And the issue of disseminating information, I'll tell you, it happens like wildfire, because my 18-year-old is already complaining about all the information that's come forth from the SAFE Coalition, because the party scene is just not what it used to be in Ojai. The city of Ojai has unanimously approved a draft social host ordinance. It took us three years to get there. And so, I appreciate your concerns about the language, but I know that you do understand the implications and the importance of filling the gap. I'm responding to Supervisor Bennett's challenge that if we can pass this in the city of Ojai, that he would help us at the county level, and I really appreciate Chair Long's bringing this to us. In those three years, we have had study sessions, public hearings, we have met with school district, school district parents, and have had tremendous support on all fronts. When, what really inspired us to take it to the social host level was looking at our environment and finding out that in these alcohol-related situations, which were sometimes in combination with other dangerous drugs, the place of last drink was not a restaurant, not a bar, not in front of a liquor store, it was the house down the street. And that was so amazing to us. And we found, through some careful analysis led by our former police chief, Captain Pentis, that in the summer of '04, we had 298 disturbance calls for service involving alcohol use and youth. 298 in one summer. And in fact, one of those disturbance calls was for a party of 16-year-olds, there were 200 of them, not 400, so a smaller party. And there was an overdose. In fact, the responding deputies found two youth carrying out someone in the overdose state. They saw the police, they dropped him and ran. And the deputies responsibly took care of the problem. The host parent was arrested, but the DA did not and could not file any charges. Same time next year, we returned from that meeting at the Juvenile Justice Conference in Tucson, and find that that very night, the same parent, the same youth, the same circumstances, 200 more kids, another party, with a lot of alcohol, a lot of property damage. And so, for us, this ordinance, I think, comes just in the nick of time. We need your support for two reasons. One is for law enforcement in general. We're four square miles, obviously, the parties will just move across the street, and without that continuity, we can't expect this to be effective. But we also need the continuity in order to change the environment, to change the norm, and to change the expectation of parents and youth, so that they really understand that the culture is different. Underage drinking at parties is no longer acceptable. It's not acceptable in the city of Ojai, in the valley, and in our entire county. And I thank you for considering this, and I would be happy to answer any questions later on. Just let me know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have another card. Ruth Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board and staff. My name is Ruth Cooper, and can you hear me all right?
You can pull it down some. There you go.
I am the coordinator of the SAFE Coalition, which is working to reduce youth substance abuse in the Ojai Valley. And I wasn't planning to speak, but I just wanted to make sure that all of you understand that Ojai's draft, while based on guidance that we've received and legal counsel and so on, is, has some, has some aspects to it that... so on, is, has some aspects to it that... Let me start again. The model social host ordinance that Ojai has, I think, might be able to be a guide for this board and your council, because we also are definitely holding youth hosts accountable. So if a young person has a party and their parents are not aware or present of it, aware or present, the youth would be held accountable, and the youth would be the person considered in violation of the ordinance. If the parents were in cahoots with the young person and agreed upon this, then they could be held jointly liable. So I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that, because we know that about 75% of the underage drinking parties that occur, at least in the Ojai Valley, don't have a parent present. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the personal testimony on it. Supervisor Bennett?
Just quickly, Ruth Cooper, the head of the SAFE Coalition, I just want to compliment her. SAFE Coalition is not just focusing on the social host ordinance, but they're focusing on the whole issue of substance abuse in the Ojai Valley. I think probably for a long time, there was too much denial, and they probably have hit the issue head-on and doing a remarkable job. And there's real change coming about. I really appreciate that leadership, Ruth. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks?
What really stuck out in this report to me is that underage drinking is a factor nearly half of all the teen automobile accidents. And you would think that teen automobile accidents are pretty high up there in all the different, in the demographics, they're probably the ones that are getting the most accidents to begin with. But I think as you get out there and promote this information, that one, as a parent of three teen drivers right now, that one stands out very strongly in concern that their accidents, a lot of these accidents being caused by alcohol. And I sure didn't know that. Also regarding these parties, it is a different day and age now where you have these, every kid's got a cell phone. And it's sometimes actually not the fault of the kids that end up having the party at their house, because it's one of those spontaneous things that just happen. One kid calls the next kid, and their friends all come, and they've got a cell phone, and they call their friends, and they come, and you end up, you know, in a short period of time with a lot of people, whether you like it or not, because of these parties. But of course, it's, you know, it's the parent's responsibility to see that that doesn't happen, particularly if they're around. Also, I'd like to get a copy, I don't have it before me, of the draft ordinance that you're looking at. And I would certainly bring that to the City of Thousand Oaks, too, which is in my district, because I think that it is really important to have what, any tools that we can have to avoid these occurrences. When you think about it, it's against the law for teenagers to drink, and yet the only way we can stop them, other than doing the, you know, stings at the liquor stores, is do it at the homes. And I don't think parents understand really what they're, what the implications are of having that availability to teenagers. But thank you for this information, and I look forward to getting a copy of the draft ordinance, and we'll do what I can to, to see that this gets out there.
Thank you for the comments. This really is an attempt to look at a tool, and a tool that is both a carrot and a stick. The carrot side of it being the public education that will be ongoing with the work of many of you here, and as we take it out to our respective communities. And the stick piece is, at some point, you have to get down to having an enforcement tool that has some punishment, and the punishment's in this sense, since it is not a criminal act, it becomes a civil act, which becomes dollars, and that hits home real hard. And the public education side of that to the parents is to say, again, we need to change the way we think about how we as a community and parents or adults who are, oversee youth, that these rites of passage have to be, rites of passage that develop strong behaviors for adulthood and strong behaviors for socially living together in a community. And so the old rite of passage of drinking is, should be passe, in the sense of not being an acceptable passage anymore, or one that we even consider a rite of passage. So I would like to move the recommend... Did I have another card? Had another card. Never mind, one last card. Is that it? That it? I really thank you for coming here to speak. So then I will call up Ann Davis. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. I am the mother who arrived home to 400 children.
Oh, bless you.
At her home. I live in Oak Park. I keep an alcohol-free home. I have a former husband who died from alcoholism. I have a 20-year-old who is an alcoholic himself. What occurred, from my understanding, was, and I also have pictures, if anybody would like to see what my house looked like after 400 children, adults, were there, is that this party was set forth in motion by a flippant remark from my daughter, who said that my mother was not going to be home. Three of her friends took on that, oh, good, we have an empty house. My daughter was not there until almost the very end, because I had called to say I was arriving home 48 hours before I was due to arrive. This party was sent out via myspace.com. So it turns out, not only did I have Oak Park children, but I also had 20, 25, 30-year-olds, because it's listed on their party space. That is what's happening, is not, it's just not cell phones and word of mouth. It's being placed on MySpace and other sites as well. So parties become not just your teen party, but a huge party. And I think there's just two things that really disturbed me, is that when I spoke with parents in Oak Park, it was, oh, well, that happens, you're not the first house. And the second one is, is that when I went into my room that night to get into bed, I found 15 used condoms in my bed. When my housekeeper arrived the following morning, there were more found in our guest bed. When I mentioned that to parents, it was, well, at least they're practicing safe sex. Mine is, I don't care what kind of sex they're practicing, this is what happens, we need to open our eyes to it, and something needs to be done, both education-wise, not just to the child, but also to the parent. And the third thing, I'm sorry, is that, the other thing that occurred is every single one of my neighbors came and said, oh, if we hadn't known you were there, we would have stopped it. But they let it progress from 5:00 in the afternoon until 10:30 when I arrived home. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping forward. I'd like to move the recommended actions. It's a motion and a second. Any objection?
I definitely support the motion, and just another thought is how important it is to notify the parents of these kids that are coming to these parties and doing this, because I think a lot of the parents are clueless that their kids are involved in it, and if they're getting in traffic accidents, everyone in that car should have their parents notified. You know, if they're at, you know, this party, the best we can do, even if it takes the mother doing it, or the person, the grown-up at home doing it, I think that is a good way to make sure that parents are educated, too.
Thank you. Hearing no objection. So ordered. I thank you for your good work. We'll be bringing this back within 90 days. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Do we have any announcement from closed session? I'm sorry. We're finished with our main meeting? No.
I expect there will be an announcement.
Oh, okay. We may have an announcement at a closed session.